Are we on? Okay. Hello, sorry, I'm getting complaints, no one can hear me. My name is Kelly Long, I'm welcome to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors for September 1st. This is our regular board meeting. Can we get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Huber?
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Here, so we are all on and we have three board members that are joined us in Zoom and two here at the dais, so with that, I'd like to get the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll ask Supervisor Zaragoza.
Thank you, please follow me. I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's always good to set the tone for our meetings. The next item is our minutes for the meeting for Tuesday, August 18th and Tuesday, August 4th and Tuesday, July 29th. Any modifications to this notes? Supervisors?
Move approval?
Hearing none, I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Zaragoza, can I get a second?
Huber, second.
Thank you Supervisor Huber did a second. Without any further discussions, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yes, and that motion is approved. The next item is our agenda review.
Thank you Chair Long. Item nine, opening COVID-19 update, comment letters from Jay Boomer Butler, John Senazoic and Judy Bruce have been submitted. And then we request that we hear item nine, the COVID update, item 32, the Farmworker Housing Program, and item 36, the expansion of the Business Assistance Program. We request those items be heard before I make public a comment. Again, that's item nine, 32, and 36. And we've talked about doing that in order so we can get right to the COVID update. Item 29, unscheduled vacancy, receive and file unscheduled vacancy notices, comment letter from Teresa Jordan has been submitted. Item 32, Human Services, approval of the program designed for the Farmworker Household Assistance Program. Request to be reheard right after item nine. Item 34, Board of Supervisors, recommendation of Supervisor Bennett to incorporate into the General Plan Update amendments to the Ojai Valley Area Plan Policy to retain Creek Road as two lanes and add a new program regarding recreational trails. A comment letter from Tina Braumond has been submitted and requests to be heard with item 39, General Plan Update at 1:00 time certain. Item 35, Board of Supervisors, recommendation of Supervisor Parks to include a policy of collaboration and communication with the California State University Channel Islands and its site authority in the 2040 General Plan Update. We request this item to be heard with item 39, the General Plan Update at 1:00 time certain. Item 36, CEO's Office, receive and file an update on the COVID-19 Business Assistance Grant Program, a board letter and a comment letter from Adam Haverstock of the Greater Kanejo Valley Chamber of Comments. Comments have been submitted. In addition, revised Agenda 9, revised Agenda Page 9 has been provided. And we request to hear that right after nine. Item nine, and then item 37, CEO's Office, received the fiscal year 20-21 revised recommended budget, a board letter and attachments have been submitted. Item 38, CEO's Office, report on potential impacts of the November 2020 ballot initiative to adopt an ordinance to allow commercial cultivation of cannabis in unincorporated Ventura County. A revised board letter and exhibits one and two have been submitted. Finally, item 39, Resource Management Agency Planning, public hearing to consider certification of the 2040 General Plan Final Environmental Impact Report. 967 additional public comment letters have been submitted. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisors, are there any further changes to the agenda? In hearing none, a motion to approve, please. It's been motioned by Supervisor Zaragoza, can I get a second?
Huber, second.
Huber is seconded, so it's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yes, so that motion is approved unanimously. Next item we have is our moment of inspiration by Dr. Francisco Bracho. It's our pediatric, herniatologist and oncologist for Children's Center for Cancer and Blood Disease for Ventura County. Is he here? Oh yes, you are on audio. So Brendan, if we can have him come up? So thank you to everyone for understanding our technology, we have a lot of moving parts here. And we will be having him come in audio. Hello, Dr. Braco.
Hi. There's also a PowerPoint that they were gonna have up?
Okay, we have a PowerPoint, just to let you know, we're getting a little bit of feedback. And if you can turn up your volume a little bit, I'd really appreciate it.
The volume on my?
There you go, that's good, just talk a little louder.
Okay. All right, well, thank you to the Supervisors and to the CEO Mike Powers and other honored guests here today and to the Ventura County Community at large for allowing me to speak today. September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And while childhood cancer is something that is in the national consciousness, its history and actual impacts sometimes is left short. Not that long ago, really, in the 50s, we had no idea what to do with children with cancer. And it wasn't until the early 60s that any success was made. And that was because academic centers got together and decided to treat people identically and then try new regimens each time. That has raised the survival so that in the 70s, survival was as high as 60%. And then now is as high as 84%. So while these tremendous successes show what academic centers can do and meant also that all the care was centered at those places. They were the only places that had all of the resources available to them to be able to conduct these both intense regimens and care for the children during it. Each fight is hard fought. So each victory of all those children that were able to survive their cancers was a hard fought battle and continues to be. Locally, that meant we did not have those resources either in Ventura County. It wasn't until 10 years ago, well, a little more than 10 years ago, where Children's Hospital Los Angeles partnered with the healthcare organization, healthcare agency to build the center here. And I was lucky enough to help build it. That meant that instead of children having to drive 50 or 60 miles to get their care, which could be daily, they could have their care locally for most of their treatment. You'll see in the pictures, a lot of pictures of our staff working together with the children. And it's quite an endeavor, we have chemotherapy transfusions when they get sick with nausea and vomiting or they have a fever, which can be a deadly occurrence, our center can take them in directly. My local staff, that is the ones that are in my clinic, are the ones that also provide training for the general pediatric staff, case management, they liaison with the intensive care unit to do my procedures, which children often need. The front office and social workers and the back office, they are very active as well. And all together, we have a small group that's able to accomplish many, many things. The front office with translation, organizing, getting the insurance completed. And you'll see lots of events that came through because of our solitary social worker who has done many, many things to liaison with our local community. So as you can see, it takes a lot of people to help fight cancer. We've had many volunteers and a lot of community organizations that support us. Some of the special volunteers that I wanted to talk about were the Castro family who organized a Santa event many years to deliver toys to our families. James Lockwood, he's a local artist and he comes on Fridays to make art specifically for the children. And now during COVID, he makes it at home and then has it delivered to us. We had one of our many other volunteers, Corinne Hutchison, who had Hodgkin's disease. Was, we assisted in her care here locally, she survived it. And now she's a nurse here working at the healthcare agency. But there are many organizations that also have helped. National ones like Make-A-Wish, who give all the kids a special wish during their trials against cancer. The American Cancer Society, which has partnered with us many, many times. But there are also local organizations, the Teddy Bear Cancer Foundation gives direct financial support to families as usually one parent has to not work or both parents have to work less. They also help fund the support group, which has been very successful in getting families together, not just the kid with cancer, not just the parents, but also their siblings to be able to work together to deal with all of the issues that they have to go through. Cancer Fit has physical exercise, which the kids desperately need. They also have provided special events. The Lions Clubs, specifically the Amber Lights Lions Clubs, have made these magic yarn wigs for the kids. And many of the Lions Clubs have banded together to provide financial assistance and help with our cancer awareness events. The Young and the Brave Foundation, they also assist families in helping them with their fundraising over the internet. And have been involved in many of our activities. The largest one that I haven't talked about is actually the National Charity League Juniors. They're the ones that have made the difference to be able to have all of these local resources because they get raised funds directly for the running of the clinic. You saw some of the new chairs that we had made special for the clinic. Those were funded by the National Charity League. And every year, they've tried to have a gala. This year, all of these organizations have had to work to try to how to raise money to help the kids without having a gala or other in-person event. Yet still, they make sure that they help our kids. And many people would wonder, well, what has COVID meant for our families? And it is a big deal. Well, some families, they're used to hand washing, face masks, well, that was their lives all the time. So that continued, wasn't that much of a surprise. But that their kid could have cancer and could also become sick with this awful disease was a great concern. And many of, of course, the extended families are also involved. So that has definitely impacted our families because they still have to come to get treatment, they still have to leave their house. Our work is essential and their work is essential, the families' work to save their kids' lives is essential. During the time that we've been here, Ventura County has continued to support and expand resources for children. So none of this would have been possible without the support of the healthcare agency and the Board of Supervisors in making sure that a cancer center for children is active and running in the county. But they haven't stopped there. They since opened the pediatric intensive care unit at the hospital. That provides life-saving care for our children that sometimes had to be sent out for those kinds of events. It also allows us a safer place to have procedures done. The whole hospital has actually been impacted, as you could imagine. Laboratory, pharmacy, pharmacy has to devote a lot of time to these rather complicated regimens that are devised, that are saving children's lives. The Ronald McDonald Room is a special event for, that's being heavily sponsored by the local community, including the Lions and the Juniors, that will have a place of respite within the hospital. A quiet space where families can renew and rejuvenate while their child is in the hospital getting cared for. And all of these things are shown to the state because our county has been awarded an additional $15 million to expand those pediatric hospital services, all of which will help these very special families that are fighting cancer. I want to say a little bit again about the people that I work with. Many people say it must take special people to work with cancer and, well, I'm not one of them, but yes, the people that I work with are. As you can see, there's lots of smiles, which would seem strange when you're dealing with something so serious. But they both are very dedicated to doing complicated things, taking care of people at their worst and bringing joy to their lives all the time while they're in clinic. So thank you to the Board of Supervisors, to CEO Mike Powers, and that's my moment of inspiration, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Braco. I wanted to use this as a moment of inspiration because we have been speaking about COVID-19 for the last five months and wanted to remind. Sorry, a little shocked. Cancer is a really huge issue. Wow, that's great. Live and on TV, I've been teared up. When cancer hits your family, it's really hard and it takes a very long time. I have someone right now going through the same thing. I just want to say thank you to all the family for doing all that you do. And our employees too, and the volunteers that just are hourly. It's amazing and it takes a village, so I just, thank you so much to all of our volunteers and everybody because this really hurts and you guys are all of these, so thank you. I don't know why I'm still choked up, but it really hits hard.
Madam Chair.
We do have a resolution and just want to say thank you so much to all of our people, thank you.
Madam Chair, what do you read that, I also like to thank, you know, the doctor and the volunteers. In fact, yesterday, I had a nurse that's retired, she's a nurse, school nurse, and she was sharing with me about all the children that she took care of and how the children that had cancer were so brave and working with the cancer and the disease and the families and the siblings. But I just want to thank, thank, you know, thank all the volunteers because she says those little kids are just brave as anything and to see them suffer is just horrible, but, but thank you for all the volunteers and thank you, doctor, for and all the volunteers that you put up on the board there, thank you so much for caring for our children. In fact, all of us, but the children are really extremely important, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else Supervisor Parks?
Thank you, and I appreciate the emotions Supervisor Long, it is really difficult to see a child with cancer and I actually think about the, all those mothers near Santa Susana Field Lab and what they've been going through in actually losing children to cancer. It was, you know, what the doctor said, that before, they didn't actually know what to do. So it has progressed a lot and to be able to make the children comfortable. And I just am so impressed with our community coming together and the tremendous financial support that is, including the Ronald McDonald House that has been brought forward to our county hospital. We are so fortunate that the parents have a good place to be, you know, at that facility as well as the best treatments that we can give. So thank you all for all the collaboration and coming together and all the private sponsors too, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I just wanted to highlight on this resolution that, you know, the coronavirus has added additional stresses on the families with their children's needing in-person care and that the medical system has been stretched, the community organizations are less able to raise funds. And however, cancer does not pause and treatment does not stop. And I just wanted to say thank you to Ventura County because we continue to expand resources for children, including a pediatric intensive care unit providing life-saving care, a Ronald McDonald Room at Ventura County Medical Center to provide a quiet space for respite and an award of $15 million to expand our pediatric hospital services from the state. And I just can't imagine what our community would do without all these services. And so I would like to just say thank you very much. I hope everyone is inspired. So with that, I'll put my tears away and move on to, yes. Was there another board member? Oh, thank you Supervisor Huber, sorry I didn't see you.
Just wanted to say from my heart, I just want to say thank you very much for all the people that dedicated this because it's a very, very important issue that we're dealing with here and people have worked really hard from their heart to protect our children and our community. So thank you very much to everybody for this, Supervisor Long, this is Speaker Bennett.
Yes Supervisor Bennett.
My colleagues, my colleagues have said it well, so I just want to add my appreciation to everything that my colleagues have said, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, thank you, Dr. Bracho. Consent calendar, we have items 12 through 30. Are there any questions, comments?
Move approval?
Thank you very much, I have a motion to approve, can I get a second? Second Supervisor Parks, I see you on my screen, but I can't hear you.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll give you a second.
Thank you, it's been first and second, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yeah, so the consent calendar has been approved, thank you very much for all of our staff for their hard work on this. Next item will be nine, receive a report regarding the coronavirus. So we will pass this along to Mr. Powers.
Thank you Chair Long, board members, community members and county team. So just a powerful presentation about the pediatric oncology program at BCMC and just a quick note on that too, that it is the only program like it in our county so that these families can stay here locally because it impacts that child, but it impacts the siblings and the parents and the whole family network. So to be able to have it here is a game changer and a great leadership from our hospital and clinic teams and National Charity League Juniors, Amy Towner, Ventura Rotary, it truly has galvanized our community. So thank you for highlighting that Chair Long. And in keeping with that same spirit of positive life-affirming events happening in our county with our community facing, you know, the economic and health crisis that it is, there are life-affirming moments happening and I wanted to just highlight one real quick if we could. Lori, can you put it up there or can I do it? Well, hold on one minute, thank you. Nope, that's not it, it's a picture. Okay. I'll come back to that in just a moment.
That COVID, not the picture.
I'll come back to that in just a moment. So why don't we go ahead with our other items? So I did want to announce just very quickly that that your county Ventura has been, this is hot off the presses, designated as the number one digital county in the nation. And very excited about that, yeah, all right. And that's important for our county.
Yes.
But it's important for our community as well because what it means is the availability of online services at a time when our community needs them the most. And IT has done a great job, their approach is to have people online, not in-line. So if you go to our website, that's Ventura.org, you can go on that main page there and see there's a box that says online services and that lists out the comprehensive services available from your county here. So again, we're very excited about it, I think it's a great reflection, our IT team and Terry Theobald and Mike Pettit's leadership over the years, your board's investment year after year in IT infrastructure here, you know, modern systems. Our county departments who embrace technology and they push us forward with their innovative spirit and our public who really gives us ideas about how we can better serve them. So again, it's, we're excited to be able to announce that to our community today because that's what it's about, is using technology to better serve. So we will have a separate presentation at a future board meeting on that, but did just want to share that with you and again, as an opportunity to highlight the online services. So we've all seen now, of course, the governor's new approach to moving forward with the pandemic. And I think there's been good coverage of it, but just to summarize, it's going to focus on two measures, on our positivity rate and our case rate and we'll hear more details on that. And it puts us in what's called the purple section and, you know, we're very in good shape on the positivity rate at 6.25 compared to eight. But on the case rate, we should be at a nine, we need to be at a nine and we're at a seven. But we'll continue to advocate as we have with the state for more flexibility on that case rate piece, particularly for three reasons. One, because we have such a favorable positivity rate. Two, because we are testing, we believe, at a much higher rate than most counties. And three, because the state has helped us demonstrate the incredible compliance of our local businesses. They can do this safely, they're helping us enforce masking requirements, they're helping us with physical distancing. And of the 2,680 businesses that our state has inspected here in the county, they've only issued three violation, which is an extraordinary, extraordinary compliance rate. And so again, we'll continue to advocate with the state for that flexibility because we know our community can do it safely and is ready. We will talk about later some more business support for the Business Assistance Program, those $5,000 grants and expanding that so that we can provide those grants to all of the eligible applicants and we're excited to announce that. Wanted to, can you move this slide forward, I do, it's just not, it's not moving it. And we're hearing a little background noise there. There we go, okay, okay, well, let's. All right. Thank you very much, thank you. I am trying. There we go, so this is the moment I was referring to earlier. And again, just a heads up for folks online, we are hearing some background noise.
Supervisor Bennett, could you mute your mic, please? Thank you. Continue.
It was muted, that's not me.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, we'll just keep going on, I'll just speak up a little bit. Again, so what we have here, this is the Campos, Campos family celebrating the delivery of their beautiful baby boy and at Santa Paula Hospital, and it's just such a wonderful moment, his name is Jamison Simon. And you can see he's doing healthy and well there and what's wonderful also to see the family in the background there celebrating safely, physically distanced in the garden, but celebrating nonetheless the beautiful birthing experience with the midwifery program there at Santa Paula Hospital. And it just shows that, you know, with all the challenges our community is facing, there's a lot of life-affirming events happening. And we appreciate so much the Campos family allowing us to share this with the community and just to see the smiles on their faces and to see the family celebrating, really says it all, really says it all. And so with that, we will continue to move forward. And just a reminder on that too, though, that, you know, there's really safe, important healthcare services offered by all of our hospitals in the county and people, we understand the hesitance, but please don't wait. If you need medical care, you need your check, if you need screenings, you need to get it. There's telehealth appointments available as well, but that's also health. But that's also a health, health challenge for our entire community. So please do continue to get those, those health checkups.
Madam Chair, before you continue, Michael, I just want to share that I'm happy that Santa Paula Hospital is doing well. And because I know that the folks over in Santa Paula and Villamore and Piru needed that hospital. And that's, you know, you're showing there that it's really working to the benefit of the community. So I want to thank our staff for doing that.
Thank you Supervisor.
Yes, I would just like to say on the midwives, bringing that into Santa Paula has just been such an added benefit for our whole community. And I've been following them since the inception and just the families and how comfortable they are with that whole program. Our dynamic midwives, just really powerful.
It's working out good.
It's a great match for our hospital. So it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you Supervisor. And now you can see that here's the new blueprint and we've already touched on this. Here's the key new measures. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Levin to walk us in more detail through the new program. Thank you very much.
Hello, Dr. Levin. I believe you are coming in with, on Zoom. You may begin when you're ready.
All right, can you hear me now?
Can you be a little bit louder, please?
All right, let me see if I can do that.
Thank you, or just talk louder.
All right, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board, Chair, Mr. Powers. It's nice to be here this morning. I would like to talk about some of the updates in our, in public health. And the first thing that we'll talk about is based on this slide. And that is, as Mr. Powers referred to, a new approach, a new blueprint for how we're going to reduce COVID in our county. There are four tiers in this new system, in this new scheme. The highest risk is purple and then moving down to red, substantial. The highest risk is called widespread. And then we move down to orange and then finally down to yellow, finally and hoped, we hope that we'll move down to yellow. We are at purple, widespread right now, and we're not alone. We have at, we're defined as having more than seven cases, new cases each day per 100,000 people. That is, since we have 850,000 people in our county, that means that we simply multiply seven times 8.5 because there's 8,500,000, right? So that is 60 cases. So what we want to do is to get less than 60 new cases on average every day to move down to the next tier. Right now, we're at 10.9 cases. So we're well above seven. Many counties are a lot higher than that, but with 10.9, that means we're getting 93 new cases of COVID a day in our county, and we need to be below 60. We are at six for positive tests, which means 6% of the time that we test, let's say we test 1,000 people in a day. On that day, there were 60 of the thousand tests that were positive, six out of 100. So we're better than that. The way that the system is devised is that the worse of the two numbers is what lands you in that category. But as we proceed down the categories, as our risk is reduced, we can open more businesses and we can open more activities. There is a proviso for if we start to do poorly in our hospitalizations. And if we fail to meet the current metrics that we're in for two tiers, then we have to move back. So let's say we make it down to red, but now we failed to stay in that four to seven range for new cases or five to eight range for, for, for positive tests. And we do so for two weeks, then we have to move back up to purple. So we don't want to do that as a county. Also, once you meet the criteria to move down to a lower tier, from our current tier, which is tier one, down to tier two, there is a 21-day mandatory wait time between that move. So we need to get down below that rate and stay down below that wait rate for 21 days. And we can only move one tier at a time. And this is assessed and announced weekly, not daily. So I think it's every Tuesday that we'll hear our status. Next slide, please. I don't see that I can control it. Okay, good. Thank you. So the, this is a map, of course, California. And you can see that we are not alone, that 87% of California's population sadly is in this highest risk group, widespread. And those are those numbers I mentioned to you previously. We're at 10.9 cases, which is to say 93 cases a day. And we need to get down to 60. So let's move on to the next slide, please. All right. So under the current risk tier, we have, in this new system, there's no significant changes in what is open and closed. I shouldn't say significant changes because there are a few changes which I think are very positive. And that is this new blueprint allows for indoor malls to open at 25% capacity, for beauty parlors to be opened indoors, and for barber shops to be opened indoors. And those are our areas that we hear a lot about from the public and hear about that frequently. And so I'm gratified to see that those can now open up, in fact, as of yesterday. In fact, we had to issue a health order yesterday to support the reopening of indoor malls, hair salons, and barber shops because we had our own local health order, which supported the state's previous order. And so we had to change that. When we get to the next lower tier, which is substantial risk at level two, we will have most businesses that can then be open indoors, but to a limited degree, usually 25% occupancy. This does not include bars, distilleries, breweries, pubs that don't serve meals, or gatherings related to concerts and entertainment venues. Those things will still not change down at the next tier that we get to. However, electrologists, piercing shops, tattoos, tattoo parlors, those would be able to open. Next slide, please. So our current tier does not change the school waiver process that we entered into for reopening that we announced a couple of weeks ago, for in-person instruction for pre-kindergarten through sixth grade in our county. So even though we're in this tier, we still get to have that. And the update on that is we've had two waivers that have been granted by us and the California Department of Public Health. And that's for Bethany Christian School in Thousand Oaks and Carden Conejo in West Lake Village. We have a waiver pending approval. It's already up at the state for Oak Grove School in Ojai. And a waiver that will be submitted today to California Department of Public Health, Conejo Adventist Elementary School. So we have made some movement. We have seen some movement on that. We are looking at these applications rigorously. We really want schools open very, very much. We, I think it's so important that especially the younger kids get this face-to-face contact, even though it's a face covered by a mask. But I think it's also incredibly painful to be trying to have education at home. And so we're doing our best, the schools are doing their best, the parents are doing their best. But this is an escape valve, which I think is, has been welcomed. And I'm really pleased to see it. There's also a change in guidance for small cohorts or groups of children that was released on August 25th. And I just want to briefly go through what that's about. It's for youth, for youth in controlled supervised indoor environments. It's indoor, operated by local educational agencies, meaning schools, nonprofits, and other authorized providers. Its purpose is to provide guidance for necessary in-person child supervision and limited instruction, meaning teaching, targeted support services, and I think that's important, targeted support services, and facilitation of distance learning in small group environments for a specified subset of children and youth. And it's aimed, and the county, the state has said this, it's aimed specifically at special needs and English learning kids in particular. The program's intended for a stable group of kids, about 14, above 14 or lower, and two teachers that can be together. They have to avoid contact with other such stable groups. And these cohorts must be in groups as small as possible. And this practice decreases the opportunities for exposure to disease and to transmission of this virus. So one-to-one specialized services can be provided to a child that's in this group. However, someone from the outside who's a specialist, for example, speech, can enter this group at a school setting and interact with a given student. This includes, but is not limited to occupational therapy services, speech and language services, and other medical and behavioral services or educational support services such as targeted intervention strategies. So I personally want to encourage in-person, small group education for special needs children and English learning children in our county. And I'd like to see this in our private schools and in our public schools. And public health will do everything from our end to support this and to green light this kind of effort. Next, oh, I guess that's, I still want to be on that slide for a moment. I think we're back on slide nine. I'm sorry. All right. And so outside of the waiver or cohort approach, schools are eligible for reopening. And this is all schools, public schools, for reopening fully for in-person instruction, following California-specific guidance. Once we're out of tier one for 14 days, we move from tier one down to tier two, 14 days later. All schools at all levels can open. Right now, the waiver process is only through sixth grade. Next slide, please. Labor Day weekend is coming up, and our current plan is to keep our beaches open, social distancing. And we want to have the community support in order to not have spread going on at those beaches. So please keep your distance. Should Los Angeles County or a neighboring county, we'd even consider, I suppose, with Santa Barbara closing their beaches, that we would reassess the situation about keeping our beaches open for this holiday. We need to urge our public to continue their efforts not to gather with members from other households over this coming Labor Day weekend. We've got to maintain our social distancing and following hand washing and face covering guidance. We need to plan not to plan. We have to plan not to make plans with other groups. If we cannot gather, we will not have a surge. It's that simple. The last time we had a surge, again, remember, it was on a baseline of 20 new cases, 20 cases in our hospital of COVID at any one time. We were at 75 cases of COVID at any one time. At a surge of 20, we threatened to go into our surge capacity at our hospitals. We will surely do so if we have a surge at the current level that we're at in our county. So please do your best to think about ways to communicate and to have, express your love for other family members and friends, but do it on Skype or some other method of getting together. Next thing I wanted to mention is please get your flu shot this coming season. It's critical. You don't want to get COVID on top of the flu. You don't want to be thought of as having COVID and having to take those extra steps if all you have is the flu. So let's not fill hospitals with both COVID cases and flu cases. That will only worsen the problem. So get your flu shot, please. And then finally, I'd like to mention that yesterday, we were now opened up offering nursing students the opportunity to train in our long-term care facilities. And we're happy about that. I know that they're happy about that as well. So I'm finished with my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Levin. I really appreciate this. I know we are getting a lot of questions from our community as to Governor Newsom's announcement of this tier. Appreciate his office, Anna Manasantos, Dr. Galley, reaching out to CSAC, Urban Counties, and our very own Mike Powers, our public health director, Dr. Levin, and Rigo Vargas, myself, to make sure that we understand the tiers. I wanted to ask you, Dr. Levin, just if you could reiterate, what does it mean to go from the purple tier to the red tier? How many days is it between tiers and why?
You have to, thanks Supervisor. You have to qualify for that change for 21 days before you're allowed to make that move. And then once you're in that tier, you're expected to keep your numbers in that tier or lower, optimistically working on the next lower tier. Because if you fall back to the numbers you had at the tier that you came from for two weeks, you've got to go back up to that other, I'll use the word worse, tier, more limited tier.
Thank you very much because I just think it's very important for our community to understand they're providing us with these tiers. But to move to the next one, we have to hit the case rate, the positivity rate, and make sure that we're there for 21 days before we can move forward. So just because these tiers doesn't mean that what we've been working so hard on for the last five months goes out the window. And we're caution to the wind. I just, my friend's mom just passed away from COVID and it's just heartbreaking. I know so many of us don't have any connection with it. And so it's very hard to keep showing the practices of washing our hands and separating and so forth. But when you know people that are going through it, my best friend's PT and she's in the hospital every single day and wears an N95 no matter what, all day, and sees patients with the COVID-19 and cancer patients and so forth. You have to understand that there are people that are dealing with this on a daily basis. And there are reasons why we're asking our community for this. So I just think it's very important that we understand the matrix so that we can all, like we have been, is working together to really get this moving forward. Because I think all of us want to get past talking about COVID-19. I think all of us want to get past all of this. So Dr. Levin, I really appreciate this. The one thing I did have a question for, nail salons. I didn't see this on here. Are they a part of the personal service or they're not in it? Could you explain that?
You know, I'll have to get back to you on nail salons. I, unless Rigo is aware of them, let me just see. Yeah, no.
Well, I can ask that question to Doctor. Yeah, I can ask that question to Rigo when he's up there. That's fine. Supervisor Zaragosa?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you, Dr. Levin, for the report. And I think it's really great that we're beginning to open our businesses and to get our people back to work. And also, I think it's important that, one of the things that you mentioned, and I think is really important, is that the beaches are going to be open because they're forecasting 100-degree plus temperatures, you know, especially for the inland communities. But I think that's going to help us and hopefully that, that adjoining counties can help us out and, or the people there, hopefully staying within their own beaches. The other thing that you mentioned, I think is extremely important, is that the flu shots are now available. And by the way, I had my flu shot and my pneumonia shot here Sunday. And one of the things that the pharmacist said to me at the time was, this is really important, especially for elderly people, and that we get our flu shots ASAP so we don't commingle, you know, with the COVID, you know, pandemic or COVID-19. So thank you, uh, Dr. Levin, for the report.
Thank you, Supervisors. Any other questions for Dr. Levin? In hearing none, Dr. Levin, thank you very much for your guidance and consideration of our community. Um, also appreciate uh, listening, your listening to all of our board members in the community. As to what are, uh, what we believe is very important and trying to figure that out with the public health order. So thank you. Mr. Powers?
Thank you. Next up, we'll hear from Rigo Vargas, Public Health Director.
Well, good morning. Good Tuesday morning to all, Supervisor, along, uh, board members, CEO Powers, staff. Uh, it's been a while. Good to be back, as Dr. Levin said, um, and even if remotely by, by some. So um, we got lots of information, but I'll go fairly quickly, try to make it brief, and we have a packed agenda. But um, since we haven't met in a while, we'll go over some things uh, that we usually do. We get a clicker. Yeah, please. Further situated. Today's numbers, I usually do not put a slide together because it's not uh, always.
Rigo, it's been you.
Yeah. Alright, let me start again. So um, I'll start with reporting today's numbers that I have. I usually don't have a slide um, uh, on, on the, on today's numbers. Because it's not always clear what numbers we're gonna be able to have by the time the meeting starts. Uh, but I do have some, and, and that's that, uh, today we'll be reporting uh, thirty-three new cases. So that is a, a good sign. Again, we, as Dr. Levin mentioned, our goal in terms of overall daily cases. Since that's what we report um, um, widespread uh, out in the community and the media is daily new cases. We need to have an average of sixty or lower, and today we're at thirty-three. Other days, again, we've been in eighties, a hundred and such. And that, those are the days that put us um, over the case rate that we need to be at. So I'll, I'll go into the specifics of this slide. I just wanted to give you today's um, the numbers that I do have. I don't have new hospital numbers, but uh, yesterday we had seventy-four uh, COVID uh, positive individuals. That needed to be admitted to the hospital and are staying in the hospital, seventy-four, again, Ventura County residents uh, yesterday. Uh, our current ICU yesterday was seventeen, that's uh, on, on the good, uh, on the good trend. We've been um, around the low twenties, sometimes in the high, high twenties, so it's certainly good to see it under twenty. The seventy-four has been uh, you know, stabilized, the, you know, low seventies, high seventies for the last week or so. Uh, in as much, uh, that new number is much larger, as Dr. Levin also indicated before we had the surge. We were in the twenties, high twenties, low thirties, certainly not in the seventies uh, and eighties. And so we hope that uh, even though we've uh, stabilized that number, that it continues to go lower. So that was yesterday's number, seventy-four in the hospital, seventeen in the ICU. Uh, we won't be reporting any new deaths uh, or additional deaths uh, today. We are at one hundred and sixteen um, individuals that per their birth certificate. Uh, COVID uh, was confirmed and their doctor indicated that it was a contributing factor in their death. I know there's a lot of uh, questions and, and perhaps some controversy around uh, deaths. But let me assure of Ventura County residents that we only report uh, COVID deaths when it's confirmed in a death certificate. Uh, we have several other deaths that are reported to us, including right now, that are not on the birth certificate. And we are working with our doctor and the mortuary to confirm that uh, the individual that passed away uh, was COVID positive. Uh, even if the doctor initially or others are reporting that it was uh, COVID related, we wanna see it in their death certificate. So uh, if anything, uh, we have, uh, we are very careful in um, in how we report our death uh, uh, cases. And that is consistent, again, with CDPH and CDC guidelines. So our total cases were, then that brings us just under eleven thousand. And uh, I don't think total cases of newly tested folks, but we are now over a hundred and fifty-four thousand. We're approaching a hundred and fifty-five uh, thousand individuals in Ventura County that have gotten tested. Again, I don't have today's numbers on newly tested, but um, the, the testing capacity uh, continues to, to be there for all Ventura County residents. And I know Mr. German will come uh, after me and touch a little more on testing. But I, I wanna encourage everyone to continue to get tested. So now, um, that was sort of the summary of today's rates, uh, or numbers. So now let's uh, get into this uh, slide is the one that you're familiar with. It does have one modification. Uh, as you know, uh, for her, uh, the case rate is uh, moved in the new opening uh. That night, it, it, it's to a seven-day average versus a fourteen-day average. And uh, it's still per a hundred thousand, uh, the rate, and we are at nine point one. The uh, the ten point one, actually, that's eleven reference, that is the state average. We're at nine point one, so we are uh, doing better than, than the state. But our goal is seven, and again, that is seven new cases per hundred thousand, and that is a seven-day average. And so that still translates to what uh, before we were commonly uh, 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 reporting. That we need to reach sixty cases for our size of our county. Uh, but on per one hundred uh, basis that the state um, is, is set this measure at. It, it translates to seven new cases per hundred thousand, and uh, the goal is seven. We're at nine point one against state, the statewide, statewide average is ten point one.
Madam Chair, that has to be for so many days?
Yes, and so this is a moving, a seven-day average. And so we need to be uh, have it reach seven and be three weeks consecutively. Uh, in order for us to move to the next, uh, the next year. As Mr. Powers indicated, uh, there is some, um, some urging, uh, of, you know, potential reconsideration of um. Lauen County, some flexibility when they do have uh, the second uh, disease transmission measure in a good standing. Ours is very good at uh, six point two. Uh, uh, the goal is eight in terms of the seven-day testing positivity rate. Uh, again, six point two uh, instead of eight, and so we're very good on that number. Our case rate uh, not, not, not meeting the goal, but because we are meeting that goal. And we do have a good testing volume and we have excellent uh, hospital capacity. Uh, and we do have very good compliance from Ventura County. We hope that in the near future, we might be able to have some, some flexibility and uh, and maybe uh, you know, getting closer to the seven. Uh, faster than, than uh, uh, normally. There is an adjustment factor, by the way, that the state already built in. Uh, and, and we're just under that threshold to get that credit um, for our testing, our testing volume. They, it is good, but they set a threshold of two hundred and forty uh, testing rate. And uh, we're about two-ten, and so that's why we didn't get, we, we didn't get a credit for uh, the, the positivity rate. But so there are some, um, some things that can be done uh, outside of just these two indicators. Again, if our testing um, uh, volume continues to increase. And uh, we meet the uh, the two-forty instead of the two-ten right now on that. It'll um, it'll allow us to get this number adjusted, the, the nine point one.
Can, can I ask you a question on that? Um, in regards to hospitalization, cuz the big thing that we are really concerned about is hospital. Do we have the hospitals to suppo, to support our community and do we have the ICUs? Um, I, I appreciate and hope we can work with the govern, the state in regards to that seven-day average. Because like you said, um, we have to be down to seven, but we're hitting all the other numbers so well. So does that mean people have been exposed, but they're not needing the hospital system? And so um, how do, how do we get that case rate down? Cuz I know like we've had it in a couple outbreaks where people have been tested and two hundred people at an age-two age. Were uh, got COVID, but they didn't need the hospital services, which is fabulous. Um, so how, how do we stop that? I know Labor Day is coming and people want to get together and, and where are we really seeing this surge? And how, how can we ask our community to help us with this case rate?
Yes, yes, uh, thank you Supervisor Long for that question. I'll have a, uh, I'll have a slide in, in a little bit specifically around gatherings and update on that. But yes, we need to uh, bring down the number of new cases. And the way to do that is to follow all the recommendations that we've been advocating and everyone has. It's still limiting uh, gatherings, uh, no large gatherings and, and no gatherings really outside of your household. And still uh, hand hygiene, the face coverings uh, when in public, maintaining your six-foot distance. And so uh, that will uh, reduce the community widespread, and that's why what is called in our tier one, uh, purple. It's called widespread community transmission, uh, the state labels it that. And so we are considered uh, in Ventura County overall, and certainly some communities still in the greater Oxford area. In the Santa Clara Valley with uh, higher case rates than the rest of the county average. But overall, in Ventura County, we still have uh, widespread community transmission. And the only way to bring those numbers down, again, is to do those uh, three things. But in terms of testing, uh, we wanna encourage, uh, continue testing. There are some people, you know, would, would say that uh, because of the increased testing, our, our case rate, um, you know, is, is high. And that is true to some extent, but the, the overall important thing is, is that uh, we need to test folks. Because there is asymptomatic transmission, up to forty percent. Is it um, is believed to be people that don't have symptoms that are spreading the virus. And so the only way to um, to uh, get uh, with that contact, uh, to contact that person. Is if they get tested and detected and then follow up with their contacts. And that way, if we work closely with them for the contact investigation and the tracing, we can bring the numbers down, uh, and minimize community transmission.
Madam Chair, and, and Rigo, my understanding is that you're working especially over in South Oxford. With science and education and working with the individuals out there. In fact, a, a couple of Sundays ago, or Saturdays ago, I was working over in Colonial. And uh, handing out some food for the residents. And uh, one of the things that they wanted to do, some of the residents has worked with the school district and worked with the superintendent. So we can share and educate the children so they can, they can convey that information to their parents. So I, I, I wanna commend you for doing that, working with the people there.
Thank you Supervisor, so we are working closely with, formed a co-listening group um, in South Oxford and the Santa Clara Valley. To uh, continue to partnership uh, with uh, public health and the healthcare agency to uh, you know, can, can have the mobile testing. At some of those uh, like communities specifically, um, neighborhoods and at the Santa Clara Valley and in the Oxford area. Working with schools, community uh, leaders, uh, community-based organizations with a promotora model. Which calls for trusted community leaders to be our amazing peers out in the community, to uh, spread information, uh, handing out information in a safe manner. Uh, and yes, the schools during food distribution events and other community events, again, in a social distance, a protective way, uh, wearing masks and such. To still do, do the outreach, uh, but those, uh, those communities that need uh, the, those numbers to come down. And overall, Ventura County residents, uh, we need to urge you to.
So can, overall as well. Continue your efforts on the nine-thirty, thirty and thir, and thirty-three, you know, in Oxford, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hmm.
And so yes, Supervisor Long, again, our, um, other numbers are, we're doing very well. And uh, we hope to, to continue to do well, we urge all Ventura County residents uh, to, to help us uh, get the number down, the case rate. That is holding us from you to the next year. Um, you did ask about uh, personal care services in the next, um, it would be allowed indoors uh, in the next tier. Uh, re, uh, the red tier, tier two. Uh, right now, with the personal services, uh, only barber shops and hair salons are allowed. Uh, in, in doors. And uh, a note as well in terms of um, gyms and churches. Um, uh, let's see, in terms of, uh, when is it speak to and, to those two, make sure. The uh, gyms uh, would be open indoors, uh, in the red as well, but only at ten percent capacity. So nevertheless, though, there would be, um, you know, I know there's a, there's a lot of um, gyms that uh, you know, rightfully so. Wouldn't be open for members, wellness is very important, although there is other ways to uh, exercise and promote wellness. Nevertheless, we do support gyms to open in a safe manner, and right now, uh, the, even with this uh, new approach. Um, on, we, we're not there where we can allow uh, gyms, uh, the state does not allow gyms to open indoors. It would be in that, in the red uh, next uh, tier.
And, and what number do we have to get to, we have to get to the red for, to open uh, for churches at a, you, you. I think that's extremely important. Is that what you mentioned?
Yes, and for churches, they would also be open, uh, be able to open indoors in the red uh, zone, their, uh, red tier next year. So that is something to aspire as well. I know there's a, you know, a lot of interest in churches being able to open indoors, and we support that in the safe uh, manner. When, when the state allows for it, again, in this system, they would be able to open, yeah, up to twenty-five percent capacity in the red tier. Um, uh, indoors, right now, it's outdoor uh, services.
That'd be great for you.
Um, live stream.
That'd be great if people can help us by masking and so forth, so we can open the churches as soon as we can, you know.
Yes.
I think it's important.
So that was correct, next please. Thank you. Okay, so uh, just a little bit, uh, we shared some of these slides have been adapted to the current metrics as the state uh. Has them uh, defined, and so these slides show the trend for the key indicators. And we wanna show them because we're trending in the right direction. And so uh, I wanna use this as an encouragement again to Ventura County residents to continue to do all that we can to bring uh, these numbers. Uh, down even further to help us with that um, case rate goal. And so the, this is the daily case rate per one hundred thousand uh, resident of Ventura County. And it shows us that from the uh, left, uh, early June, uh, we had an increase with the peak uh, surge. You know, in uh, in mid, uh, mid-June, all the way through July, we were at a high in terms of the number of uh, cases per one hundred thousand. Uh, we were up to fifteen, close to twenty, uh, around twelve, fifteen. But lately, we've been um, trending downward, and so we're now at uh, nine again. Our goal is um, is uh, seven. Next one, please. So this one is on positivity rate, uh, similar trend. As you see that even though while we're meeting this, this uh, this metric, yeah, we had a similar increase in the beginning of June. With regard to the testing, uh, testing positivity rate, the goal is eight. Uh, we did go over that, uh, that number in, uh, in June. Um, uh, and then uh, in, since uh, July and uh, certainly through August, there's been a steady downward trend. And uh, for the state, we're at six point two, and uh, so we're well below the eight percent. Um, that is a, a, a good thing there, but again, overall, uh, downward trend from our high, and it's stabilized at six. Sure, we would like to see it even better, but right now we are meeting that metric. Next, please. So uh, just to, just to show you the, the good work that is going on in our community with regard to hospitalized uh, patients uh, and their care. Uh, we, we, our hospitals responded uh, bravely, um, and uh, took care of our Ventura County residents. That were in the hospital when we had the eighties and nineties and the hundred and one, uh, high in the, in mid-July. Uh, we've seen a sustained uh, uh, decrease since those highs, as I indicated. Now we're averaging more in the low seventies of people that are um, positive for COVID. And their symptoms um, warranted them being in the, in acute care. And out of those in acute care, there are some that unfortunately they're sometimes worsening, or they go in straight into the ICU. Those numbers, uh, you know, sometimes have been in the high twenties, we've been averaging the low twenties, and yesterday's number was at seventeen. And that's the, I would say the yellow or orange line there, it's also fairly stable. So uh, we, we're doing well with those numbers. We do um, wanna bring them down because those are loved ones that are in the hospital and in the ICU. So we hope that the, you know, that, those numbers continue to go down, but uh, at least they're not trending up anymore. And of course, this um, the surge that happened in the, in mid-July is what landed us in the monitoring list in the first place. But uh, since then, we've been, we've, we've been doing well, and that, uh, we're not been, our uh, hospitalization numbers have not been increasing. And next, please. This uh, is one of the, um, getting close to the last, at least the data slides. And this is uh, just sort of uh, interesting, you're comparing our testing volume and our testing rate uh, compared to our positivity rate. And so you see that overall, when we uh, test more, uh, yes, we're gonna catch, uh, we can catch more cases. But that is important because again, that can help us with doing our contact investigation and tracing to then limit further spread. And you see that in fact, um, while it was uh, increasing, our testing positivity was increasing with our increased testing. And uh, in Ag, uh, July, August, but since uh, latter, latter part of August. Our um, testing positivity rate has gone down, uh, we're again at six point two. And uh, while our testing volume has also uh, down, it's gone down a little bit, it's stabilized uh, and so has our testing positivity rate. So overall, again, while some would uh, say with uh, some other counties that are not testing as high volume as we are. Uh, that that's why their case rate is lower, there's some truth to that. But I, I think the most important thing though is still bring the number of cases down. And one way to do that in the long term is by doing a lot of testing so that we can detect those that are positive. And those around them, we can work with them. Next, please. Next, please. So this is the update on the gathering information. The gatherings is a question on CalRedd, CalRedd is our data system where we enter all cases for both contact investigation and tracing. And so on June, June fifteenth, this this question was added. And I previously reported about a month ago our numbers then. And this is an update. So since, since June fifteen, we've had five thousand six hundred and fifty positive cases. And almost six hundred have answered, yes, did they ever attend a large gathering? And the question, the way it is, again, for all counties, it's a standardized question, is did you attend any large gathering, including a protest, a rally, a religious service, or a personal or family gathering? And then they, we can mark down yes to any of those. And so this is the breakdown of those that responded yes. Again, this is, I guess, just gives us an indication. It is undercounted, I believe, because a lot of folks, you know, are hesitant to really, you know, give us details or even acknowledge that they attended a large gathering because they don't want to disclose that information. But those that do, almost six hundred, the four hundred and twenty-nine or a little bit over seven and a half percent of the responses said that they attended a large gathering that was a friend, friends or family. And these included birthdays and weddings and so on. We've twenty-nine individuals reported that they were, or about half of a percent of those that responded said they attended a religious service. And so that's, that's an increase from, I think we had ten on this number the last time. And now it's twenty-nine. Nine folks indicated that they attended a protest, a rally or a demonstration and as a large gathering. And then there's also the other category. And we asked them for what type of other large gatherings. And these vary from, you know, going to the gym, the weddings, going out to funeral services, just other types of gatherings. That is almost two percent of those six hundred said that they attended another type of gathering other than the three that the survey asks. So it gives us an indication of large gatherings. I mean, there's, people will ask, what about the rest of the five thousand plus individuals that did not indicate that they attended a large gathering? Well, again, again, I believe it's another reporting here. So I think more than five or six hundred people attended large gatherings. They just did not disclose that. But then there's, we have a lot of cases where, yes, there are individuals that get exposed at a work site, out of a community setting. But really, one of the biggest ways that people are getting, ways to get the initial infection, it's person-to-person, family members. So we have about fifty percent of Ventura County residents have, are, have a fellow household member that is also positive for COVID. So multiple household members are positive. And so that, that is the other, the other way that people are getting exposed other than large settings is person-to-person, once they get it somewhere out in the community or at a work site or at a business. Next, please. Okay, so that concludes my presentation. Any questions before we bring up Mr. Zimmerman to go over specifics on testing?
Yes, Rico, thank you very much. Do wineries, or sorry, weddings, where do they fit within the sectors? I didn't see that on my five-page list.
No change to that Supervisor for, for the current tier that we're in. Let's see if it's spelled out, if in the next tier, red tier.
I know we have a lot of wedding venues that are concerned because people are having weddings in their backyards instead of going to wedding venues. And so I wanted to bring that up. And maybe if you don't have the answer, if we can make sure.
I don't see it listed, but I am, as we said, only hair salon, barber shops and indoor-facing stores that might already open in this current tier. But I'll look further to see if when tier two, when we get to tier two, if there's going to be a change with regard to weddings, yes.
Okay, and then for funerals, that goes into the places of worship? I think.
That would be consistent with that one as well. Certainly no change at this point, yes.
Okay, another question I received was gyms. Our very own public health, when gyms were open, were tighter. They had a twelve-foot distance between machines or anything versus the six-foot, which was the state. And if we could look at that, based on the ten percent capacity of gyms, that would be appreciated for, I, I'm just getting prepared that we're going to be good and we're going to hit the next year. So I'd like to ask these questions now. The other one is youth sports and clubs. I think that's important where we're still trying to figure out that. I know it's drills only, I believe, still, but I just want to make sure it's confirmed for our community and our park and recs department to make sure that we're clear on that. And then playgrounds. I I see people that use equipment at the, at the parks, but they can't use a playground. And if anyone has kids, being outside is extremely important and getting some of their energy out is even more. Seeing a play, a swing and not able to use it. Is there something else that we can do to ensure the health and well-being of our community? I appreciate that one. So those, and then the last thing I received from my office was the school waivers. And if we received any to do, and how long does it take to get a school waiver?
Yes, good question. So on your previous items, certainly very important, we want to be ready for because we are going to reach that, that next tier with continued excellent work of all residents. And our businesses are doing their best and they're, they have a very excellent, very good compliance. Over ninety-nine percent of those have been visited, have compliance, compliance. And so, so I think we are going to reach that red. And so we want to be ready for that and encourage folks. And so we'll have more information on specifics on which, which sectors and which capacity they would be able to open. With regard to school waivers, we've received, as of last night, eighteen applications. As Dr. Levin mentioned, we have, it's two officially open because both our office and the state has approved that request. And then there's a third one that we submitted over the weekend that we're waiting to hear from the state. The state has a three-day turnaround max. And if we don't hear from them in three days, then we're allowed to let the school open ourselves. Through this first process, a review, we want to be, have a very strong, thorough process to review the reopening plans and the applications. So it took us a little bit longer to approve the initial ones. But, you know, we are, we're looking to pretty much be within two, two weeks turnaround period by the time that the schools submit an application and they submit it to us and we get in contact with the state. The state generally has allowed or encouraged or thrown out a fourteen-day turnaround period. And we, we are striving for that. And a lot of factors still remain to, on that factor, though, is, is, for example, if we go back and forth with the school, that there's, there's some key pieces of the application that may push things off for a little long. But again, we submitted to the state those that we felt were ready within seven days from when we initially obtained applications.
Thank you very much. Supervisors, any questions? I have Supervisor Parks, please go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you for your question too about the parks. I see, you know, the slides and the swings and the children really wanting to go on them. And in some cases, there are some on it. And then the ones who can't, who are obeying the rules because of their parents, it it can be pretty stressful. And I would think if you, if the children, if there aren't, if there are only a few or no other children there and perhaps if the kids are wearing gloves, we can consider that. So I don't know if that's actually a state requirement or a county. But if there is a way that we could do that, I think that would be a real help for the children.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. That is a state regulation. We've asked them several times around that. We'll ask again about that. But you're right, you know, for children's sakes, in a safe manner. Perhaps there can be some leeway on that, but we'll have a treat to the state. There is a state issue right now in terms of the playgrounds.
Yeah, I think they're allowing for training, right? You know, in some groups. So it it just seems like something that we might be able to look at, ask the state about. And again, if it's the concern about the touching of surfaces, maybe other than wearing of gloves might take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Will do.
Thank you. Any other supervisor questions?
Thank you, Rico.
In hearing that, thank you, Rico. We will now go on to Mr. Zimmerman. Thank you very much for being here today.
Yeah, good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. A quick update on testing. As you noticed in the previous slides, we, we are testing a high volume. We are exceeding the goals that the state has set as a standard for us at a significant level. And that is, to say we do have, these are, this slide representing our active sites today. We also have done testing capacity development with other systems out there by giving them supply chains and access to our contacts associated with our laboratories so they can also do testing as well within their own system. So it's a collaborative effort. The note I would like to make, and I think last time, is that we transitioned from Ventura College as a drive-through site site to the Ventura Fairgrounds as a walk-in site. And we've noticed that we had a dip the week we made that transition, but we're at the same volume that we were earlier at the, the college site there. So our capacity is good. We, we show a high testing rate, but our capacity is greater than that. We limited some of our, our staffing because the volumes have decreased over time. But we do have, if we have any surge or need for a greater volume of capacity, we're able to handle that within the current structure that we have in place. It is important to note that we've been in discussion with the superintendent of schools on how schools, if they return to session, how they would access testing. We feel that our locations and capacity and turnaround time is sufficient to meet the community needs. And that would include the schooling population as well. So next slide, please. So this just shows the, the overall trending of our testing throughout. We peaked in the, in the, the month of July and it has dropped down. And we've seen a steady decline since that time period. But now, we, we, we kind of seem to level off a little bit in our total testing activity. We do not have any limitations in Ventura County on who is being tested, although the state has priorities to giving priorities to those who should be tested. We have not enforced those since we do have plenty of capacity. And those that desire or feel that they need a test, they, they have access to the, the testing locations there. Go on to the next slide really quick. And so I just wanted, that concludes the diagnostic or the, the testing for the virus there. And then just a quick update on our antibody testing.
Before you move on to the other type of testing, our drive-through sites, all our locations, will they be open during Labor Day weekend?
They will not be open on the holiday and that's consistent. We did not open on the Fourth of July. And so we do not open, open on the major holidays.
Okay, so Labor Day, Monday, we will not be open, but the weekend we will?
The weekend, yes, so the Saturday and Sunday will be open at Oxnard College over the weekend. It's the holiday itself. We will not have activities during that, that Monday.
Okay, and then the next question was, how successful were the pop-ups? I heard Dr., I heard Rico Vargas talk about Oxnard and Santa Clara Valley as to making sure we have testing there. And I wanted to know about the pop-ups.
Yeah, so we're continuing the pop-up strategy. And we've been through almost every community from Moore Park to Port Winneby and doing community-based targeted testing. Those have been relatively low volume, a little bit lower than expected. We've had some as high as a hundred a day there, but we've been in the, the thirties and below. So we're looking at that. We are going to continue it. It does meet a, a, a small need, but we'll continue that and continue to get our rotation going in which the community may become more familiar with that pop-up location. So we'll, we'll continue to do that effort right now.
Okay, and if you could just work with their city council or city manager to make sure that we're fitting the needs of each of the cities, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, and we, we do, we do evaluate, we're right now evaluating the productivity of some of our sites there and how we can leverage the state sites as well and perhaps cover some different communities differently. And so we are evaluating that right now. So the next time we get together, we might have some information on where we might target different communities differently.
Thank you. And I know that it was very helpful for those in our community, for Piru, who wasn't able to perhaps drive all the way to San Napa to get testing. And I know that's a small community, but Piru is vulnerable as well. So I appreciate the outreach.
Yeah, so we've been in Piru, Ojai, Moore Park, La Colonia, El Rio area. We have scheduled like for Somas back in Ojai. We'll be there probably on a more regular basis. So, you know, we'll continue that trend in that cycle.
Help over at the Colonia and as mentioned to Rico and, you know, over in South Oxford, you know, by, by Peeve Road and Sabres area.
Yes, and we, we do that. We do do a community outreach. When we go out there, it's not just social media posting. We do do hand flyers. We do work with leverage with other providers that are out there. I'll, I'll tell you, we, we, we have assumptions that those areas are underserved, but the, the activity or their rate of going to the locations has been low. So we're, we're going to assess that and see, see what, what we can do. We know at the drive-through sites, we, we have great, because we do map out where they come from, that every neighborhood seems to be accessing those sites very readily.
I bet you probably have more on Sundays because a lot of people work on Sundays.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
So, so that, that concludes. I just wanted to make a note, though, that the, the state is also expanding their capacity associated. We don't, with the viral testing, the PCR testing, we don't know how that will impact us totally. They do have goals for a forty-eight hour turnaround as far as their testing. We already achieved that goal here. We average two to four days. But with the volumes that we've been having lately, many of the tests are within twenty-four hours that people are getting their response back. So, so we feel we're very well-prepared to meet the demands as well as to expand if needed. Finally, just to give you a brief update on the antibody testing, as you know, that, that's been occurring there. There are many partners involved in that activity to do a, a, a prevalent study, if you will, associated with antibodies. And this is those that detecting, that have had the virus and that then have active antibodies due to the virus infection there. We did do a two-week sampling of the community in a June timeframe. And this is the results of it. At this point, the positivity rate for antibodies is about one, just over one percent, one point three percent. And, and fifty-six hundred individuals were sampled during that time period. It's a little bit lower than anticipated, but it tells a lot of news and information about at least the sampling and who we sampled at that point in time. We are anticipating to follow up. The, the, the group is following up with those individuals that agree. So the eighty-seven have been contacted, say, to, to retest them and to see the longevity of antibodies within, within them as part of a sample group. We are going to do a second sampling of the community in the first weeks of October. And we'll be targeting some underrepresented individuals that, that were not captured in this. So that, that's kind of the analysis that we're at today. And, you know, the scientists are really diving into the details of what it means more and more. And so when we get that information, we'll share that with you. That's it. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? If someone is tested positive for COVID and they are already, well, they've recovered, are we sending out letters to ask? are we sending out letters to ask them to donate plasma or blood to help others get through? I know in some states they are.
I am not aware of that that activity that's occurring on that.
Okay, it'd just be something to look into just to help our community out. The other question I've had is, due to flu season, what does the community have to risk to, is it flu? Is it COVID? Did I get tested on one, and because I have the strains, I can get positive for both? Like, what, as a community member, what what do we expect?
Yeah, so there'll there'll be multiple strategies associated with flu season. One is the flu shot and how to get people to access the flu shot. That's being discussed now and a plan how that's going to be distributed out through public health there. But, you know, we we right now, our locations are not the test that they're only test for coronavirus and not for influenza A or B. But there are systems out there that test for those as well, and so we'll have to coordinate as best we can because the the symptoms are similar between those two.
Yes, I'd appreciate it because also the exposure. You know, we're talking about making sure we're not spreading things, and we're going in to get tested for COVID. We don't want exposure for flu. And is there a test that does both? I I just wanted to make sure that we're we're asking these questions before the season really ramps up, so we are a little bit more prepared.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Barry, I'm not sure if if it works or not, but in the testing sites, eventually are we going to have maybe the opportunity for people to get their flu shots on the way out?
We're, yeah, that that's a possibility. We're discussing the practicality of that on how to administer the flu vaccine in an environment that's open like that. So so there's discussions on on how how to.
An opportunity for people to get their flu shots.
So so we do at our urgent cares, it's it might be a drive-through. We're looking on on potentially how to do drive-through activities there. There there's a little bit more than just the testing site. You know, we are able to have the kits kind of in more of a room temperature environment where the the vaccine oftentimes has to be controlled temperature-wise. And so so we're trying to weigh out how best administered.
How to work it out, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisors, anyone else? Supervisor Bennett, you have a question?
Bob, I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Supervisor Huber, I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you. There seems to be an awful lot of chatter about false positives from the COVID nineteen testing. Do you think the rate of false positives is significant?
In the context of false positives, there's there's multiple types of testing. And and I think the most conversation going on is with what's called the rapid antigen test. And that test there is is very reliable if someone is symptomatic and is positive. If it if it is negative, there are a lot of false negatives, and the recommendation is for them to seek after a PCR test. And so that that particular strategy is good at capturing positives, but not ruling out those that that show a negative test. And so that that's what a lot of discussion is around, the effectiveness of using tests like that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any any other supervisors? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Zimmerman. And Mike Powers.
Thank you. Thank you. So as your board and the community knows, we continue to support our vulnerable populations as well with shelter, meal services, healthcare, safety checks, free testing, and waiving of healthcare healthcare copays for respiratory conditions and COVID-related conditions. Also, I want to let you know that as we have reported last meeting, we were applying for Project Home Key acquisition and conversion of motels here locally, and the team did that very quickly, along with the city, several cities, including the city of Oxnard, and they just, the other day, we found out we received conditional approval for about nine point five million for purchase and one point seven million for operations. And there's a process now underway to gather community input on the site. That's the vagabond in Oxnard. So lots more to come, but progress in that area. Also, the rental assistance program you see. And again, one of the things we've talked about in our previous meetings is the impact on disparate impact on Latino population here locally. So just to just to remind folks that we continue to work to address those disparities, including partnering with many community-based organizations, doing a lot of outreach for healthcare coverage to ensure everyone in our community has healthcare coverage, expanding testing locations with weekend and extended hours, and expanding outreach to businesses and Latino communities to promote COVID safety and compliance. And continued enhanced media and outreach campaign in English and Spanish. And with our farm worker resource program, also an indigenous language, languages. So in the farm worker resource program, along with our education and human services continues to outreach to our farm workers in our community.
Mike, before you leave that, Madam Chair, on the on the Home Key motel acquisition, you are working with the city of Oxford officials and the
Of course.
Oxford City Council, so we form a partnership.
Partnering very well with the city of Oxnard and several cities, and so that partnership is bearing fruit right now. And, yeah, it's exciting.
Great, thank you.
Support permanent supportive housing.
And if I could, I just, I think all of us received the email from Food Share of Ventura County, and I thought it it was just speaks volumes of what our community is going through with this COVID nineteen. It's not just shutting down business, but it's feeding our families. And for Food Share, they had, they stated that they fed over six hundred thousand individuals. They've held over a hundred and fifty-plus pop-up drive-through food pantries. And they distributed over a hundred and sixty, a hundred and fifty thousand emergency food boxes. They fed so many, and that's just one nonprofit organization that is working in the community. And it just is amazing what our community is doing, and I want to say thank you very much. I know that the rental assistance program is really helping our our farm worker rental assistance is a great thing, but along with housing is food, is the need for food and our our jobs as well, so.
And Madam Chair, in conjunction with Food Share, I also like to commend the the Nine and projects that they have already out there, and also in Colonia, they have others, and over at the port, you know, so I think a lot of the other individuals and and other volunteers are helping with, you know, the, and help with the sharing of of food, which I think is extremely important.
Right, and also the schools, providing the food for the schools, and that partnership with the schools too, I think is great.
Because I know the Nine and Promise have already handed out several hundreds and hundreds of meals, you know, so, so, good.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, board members. And next up, let me get an update from Paul Stamper on eviction protection, as well as our business assistance program. So if you can, thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair Long, Board Member, CEO Powers, Paul Stamper with the County Executive Office. Not yet, but thank you. Wonderful, got it. Yes, so legislation was passed at the state yesterday, signed by the governor, invoking some protections for residential evictions. And it allows for those that were not able to pay rent from now up through from the beginning of the pandemic up through yesterday, that they have eviction protections through January thirty-first. From this point going forward, then they they still can retain those protections, but they need to sign a document that says they're impacted by COVID. And also, for this period of time, they're required to pay twenty-five percent of the rent in order to maintain that protection. There's also a extension on the homeowner's bill of rights that allows for protections for landlords to prevent foreclosure from for landlords that own residential units from one up to four units. And then after this period of time indicated by the legislation beginning in February, that's the point at which those that were given relief will actually need to begin making those payments and settling with their landlords. And the court system will be utilized as needed to help make those, you know, contracts and amendments. Any questions on the eviction portion?
And if if they don't pay the payments eventually, they they take them to court, is that?
That's right. So they've they're directing them essentially through the small claims court system.
Under five thousand, yeah.
So it'll be treated as consumer debt and will will be adjudicated adjudicated there.
It's going to be tough for some people, too, yeah.
Very much so.
Right, there's a lot that was pushed through the state even up till late, late last night.
That's right, right.
We're still trying to get through all that.
A lot of information on it, yes, and there's additional details, but it it got signed yesterday, so. Great.
Thank you. Supervisors, do you have any questions on this item? In hearing then, thank you very much. Mike? More?
Next slide, please.
I didn't go through the next slide, so.
Just a quick update on the grant program. We have another agenda item today, where we'll be talking to your board about funding going forward. Wanted to really focus this portion on the round one funding and where we're at. So again, one thousand business applicants were identified and selected for funding in this first round. Four hundred and fifty-four of those provided all the required document and were sent their five thousand dollar checks. Of the remaining five hundred and forty-six, there was some effort required to bring in paperwork and required documentation. Laura, could you please do the next slide? Thank you. So this is the breakdown of what this round one looked like. And you can see up there that a total, on the left-hand side, is the summary that shows a total of seven hundred and seventy-four of those one thousand originally selected were able to move into compliance, which means they were able to provide all the documentation that the CARES funding requires in order to be a recipient of the federal dollars. And so the funding for that second group that moved into compliance, the three hundred and twenty-three listed there, will be receiving their checks in the middle of September. And then you can see a breakdown on the right there by sitting of how that how it fell out amongst that round one group. Next slide, please. This is another way of breaking down the data of those seven hundred and seventy-four that moved into compliance. You can see that, again, your board carved out, wanted to make sure that some of these funds went towards women and minority-owned businesses and to businesses located in disadvantaged communities. And so you can see the breakdown there, and it it works out that there were forty-nine percent of the recipients that were women-owned businesses, fifty-two percent minority-owned, and fifty-nine percent in disadvantaged communities. And you can see a breakdown on the right there by industry type. And towards the top, which, you know, we're happy to see some of the hardest hit industries are represented there, so salons, gyms, personal care are grouped into that other services category. We also see also see retail trade and accommodation and food there in the top group, so we're we're happy to see that. And again, this is kind of a quick summary of that round one, and we're looking to come back to your board in just a few minutes to to talk about going forward. Happy to take questions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please, Supervisor.
And and Mike, I I am, I know that a lot of staff has done a lot of good work, Rico and so forth. But I've I don't want to embarrass you right here, but I've got a lot of good comments from people that have we've helped with the rental assistance and also with the business assistance. For example, there's one business, it's a lady owns it, minority, and she told me, she says, I want to thank you so much for the help, because she was actually using her savings, not even profits of the business, her savings to keep the employees working. And that assistance has really, really helped her tremendously, so. And she wants to come in your office, apparently they they talked to you and and you helped them out, and and I I just want to share that you are one of the whole component of what we're doing here with COVID, but I just want to thank you for the good work.
Thank you.
I just want to share that.
I happen to be the recipient of the call. There's been a whole team of people working on it. Appreciate your comments. I would want to add that throughout this process, there's been multiple businesses who've actually said, I'd rather have someone else receive the funds. And so some of them, we were trying to encourage to apply, but they they wanted those dollars to go somewhere else, so just really a spirit of community.
Yeah, this lady was, she was ready, she was ready to close, you know, close up and and, you know, it's a, the check came, got sent. Anyway, thank you.
Well, just to point out, your top one, other services, nonprofits, childcare, auto repair, car wash, personal services, salons, gyms, social organizations, they're not just your chain retail stores. Those are the mom-and-pop shops that are here locally that are trying to serve our community and that are in desperate need. And so I really want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors, Mike Powers, and staff for all that you're doing for this community, even Ventura County Community Foundation and so forth, all those that are coming, we even everybody come together to try to help these people, because jobs are needed. We can't, we can't live in Ventura County without a job, it seems like, so.
Great partnership.
I I just really appreciate the partnership. It speaks volumes for this community and and thank the federal for the CARES Act funding that we can do this. So, thank you. And as supervisors, do you have any questions? Supervisor Parks?
Thank you, and it is wonderful to be able to have funds to the federal government that we could pass on to our businesses that are struggling because of close downs with COVID. And I know that the federal government also made a criteria that the funds actually have to be helping for jobs to ensure that the employees are receiving funds. So that, to me, is a great criteria to include in this. And also, I I appreciate the summary, but I would actually like to see a the list of the four hundred and fifty-some that have already received these, and just wondering if that will be forthcoming as well as additional ones as as we give out more of these checks, if we'll also be able to see which companies are receiving them.
Thank you, Supervisor. We we are discussing that right now. There has been some businesses concerned about not wanting to publicize their recipients. So we're working through that right now with our partners, and we will get back to you.
Well.
The checks have already been sent out, correct, to the businesses? Are you saying some of the businesses that received them are going to return them?
So the checks, some of the checks have been sent out to approximately the first half of the round one recipients. And that is something we're still working through, so I don't have an answer for you yet, Supervisor.
I I would just question about the privacy.
Supervisor Bennett.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yeah, I I would have to think this is the public records where the money is gone, so I I can't imagine that we could hold on to that information. I think we have to.
Yes.
County Council, could you help with that? Is this public records act for us?
County Council?
Yeah, County Council.
I don't think, could you ask that question a little bit clearer? I couldn't really hear it.
County Council, is it a public records act request? I mean, is it a public record that, you know, where this money's gone, what businesses have received the money? I assume it is.
I I assume it is. I assume the answer is yes, but I haven't researched the specific question.
Yeah, but you assume it's, yeah, I would assume it's yes, but I I I I think it's, I think it would be foolish for us to be trying to hold on here to keep this information private. If somebody doesn't, they could return the money if they don't want to have their their information go public, but it is a public document. Thank you.
Mr. Powers?
I was just going to say, yes, that's the assumption we're operating under, is this is public information, so we'll work through that and get you that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Good questions.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, well, with that, I I really appreciate your board's comments and Paul's story about the businesses that are declining getting the grant so that others can have it. And I think that speaks to the self and spirit of our community and our businesses, and that's what's putting us on a good direction moving forward. So with that, that's our report for today. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and I know that we didn't speak in regards to our public safety in the COVID space, but I wanted to say thank you to all of those public safety members or fire departments and so forth, that have really helped to save us from forest fires. We've had the holster fire that was put out. We did have two injuries that were firemen that were treated at Santa Paula Hospital, and they are recovering. But there was a lot of effort involved in that, and having to fight fires with also making sure you're not spreading COVID. Cal Fire and OES, thank you for providing the equipment that they need. CAL FIRE and OES, thank you for providing the equipment that they need to make sure that they can still keep our community safe with that. I just wanted to say thank you again for saving us for the forest fires. I know we're still in fire season and my condolences to Northern California and all the other fires. There's just too many, so just thank you. Any other supervisors as we close on this item for COVID nineteen? I know we have several public comments and two minutes. Well, I think most of them are reads for the nine. Do we have any public comments on nine?
Just thank our staff for excellent work.
Oh, okay, great.
Madam Chair, I just, I just want to thank the staff for excellent work on this, the COVID nineteen report, and thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Any other supervisors? In hearing then, just thank you to our staff and our employees that on a daily basis are trying to keep our communities safe and healthy as we move forward. Next item we will be going to is our public comments. And we'll be providing two minutes for each. Is that all right, or do you want to take? We were saying, oh, I'm jumping the gun. Yes, thank you very much. We are supposed to hear a couple items before the public comments.
Thirty-two and thirty-six.
Thirty-two is going to be the first one, and then thirty-six, you said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I know there is a lot of coming on right now. Okay, so thirty-two is the approval of the program design for farmworker household assistance program. Melissa Livingston, hello, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers and and our residents of Ventura County. I'll be very succinct this morning, knowing that we've got a very important preliminary budget to review. But I want to thank your board for having taken the time to hear this item on its conceptual form as we talked about designing a farmworker household assistance program that would leverage a funding mechanism of leveraging donor dollars matching to general fund. And so we're coming back today to announce that we have finalized the program design. The program design mirrors very much the same design of the rental pandemic rent rental assistance program that your board approved. It authorizes a grant amount for fifteen hundred dollars for eligible farmworker households who qualify. That grant amount could cover rental housing needs, it might cover food, it might cover medical costs or other housing needs and assistance that the household requires. As we recall, our farmworkers and essential workers were impacted, having significant hardships because of the pandemic. And so this opportunity will bring some great financial relief. The program, given your approval today, will begin online applications for a thirty-day period of time. And we will begin that process tonight at five o'clock and close just before midnight on September thirtieth. Your county-led farmworker resource program team has been instrumental in already doing some outreach and and working with some of our community groups to announce this program's coming. We have over one thousand interested households in this program to this point in time. So given that, given a fifteen hundred dollar grant amount per household, that would allow us to fund three hundred and thirty-three households. We fully expect it will be a lottery process that goes through this process depending upon how many households are actually are qualifying. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, supervisor.
Do they require any documentation to for for the monies?
I'm sorry.
Reception, so the recipient's gonna require any documentation too?
Yes, there is documentation. ID will be required and a pay stub and other types of, you know, essential worker card would also be acceptable.
I think that's an excellent program, yeah, very good.
Yes, thank you. And supervisors, any other questions before we move to public comment? We do have one public comment. We have two minutes. Also, we have an interpreter on staff in case anyone needs that. So we will start with our first public comment. Clerk of the Board, I'll let you read them out.
Actually, Chair Long, the public commenter is Tiana Salsida, and she has not logged into Zoom. So I would recommend we skip over her at this time.
Okay, if she does join in, she can join in at the public comment number eight maybe. I think that will be a solution, trying to figure out the technology fund. Okay, with that, I need to get a motion to approve.
She'll move.
It's been approved by Supervisor Zaragoza. Can I get a second?
Second, Huber.
Second by Supervisor Huber. Great. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, so that motion is unanimous. Thank you very much, and I hope it, everything goes smoothly. Thank you. The next item is thirty-six. I believe. And thirty-six is the receive, receive and file the update of the COVID nineteen business assistance grant program in approval.
Good morning, Chair Long, board members, CEO Powers, Paul Camper with the County Executive Office again.
Oh, thank you.
We're here to ask your board's consideration to increase funding available to us up to a potential increase of eight point nine million dollars for a total program amount of twenty-three point nine million. That would be in the instance that every business applicant was able to move into compliance with their documentation required. However, you can see from the slide here that approximately fifty percent of the now three thousand seven hundred eighty-seven business applicants who are eligible have moved into compliance and are our partners at the Community Foundation and EDC Collective are working diligently during outreach to all these businesses, trying to move as many of them as possible into compliance. You can see some of the breakdowns there by by location, as as well as women, minority and disadvantaged communities that these business applicants are coming from. And so our goal is to fund every one of them that can move into compliance and to move as many of them there as possible. Before opening up the questions, I would you have Bruce Stensley on Zoom, who would like to make some comments as well?
All right, welcome Bruce. We'll bring you up on the screen.
They're connecting him now.
Thank you. I really appreciate the EDC being collaborative with this and working hard for our businesses. Wanted to plug that as we're pulling him up on the screen.
Yes, and this has been an all-hands-on-deck, just day and night operation, lots of outreach happening to all these businesses. And it's wonderful to have such partners like the Community Foundation, EDC and Weave not only to continue this outreach, but also they're making connections in the business community in a way that they haven't in the past, and it will solidify their ability to provide the services they already provide.
All right, we have Bruce, welcome. If you could bring him up to see.
Chair Long, Mr. Powers, members of board, staff, Bruce Stensley, Economic Development Collaborative. If I, if you will, I just about two minutes, a couple of comments on need and process related to this. So first, there's a lot of question about what is the ongoing need for this kind of business support? And for a little bit of context, consider the following. Over the last several months since April, businesses in Ventura County have received some one billion dollars in paycheck protection plan loans, some half a billion dollars in economic injury loans. Workers have received some one billion dollars in unemployment insurance assistance. Yet these programs are largely exhausted, and we still have fifty-two thousand workers unemployed, twelve percent unemployment, and another fifty thousand or so workers who are involuntarily, partially employed or partially unemployed and working part-time. That's an extraordinary need, and so this kind of money is going, this twenty-three million dollars. Fair question would be, is it significant enough? Well, the need is there and it is significant. This money is going to businesses that were not recipients of economic injury loans or paycheck protection loans. It's going to the small businesses, as noted, to help keep workers employed and self-employed workers still in business. In terms of the process, we just can't say enough about the collaboration, the support, the leadership of the county, the work of the Community Foundation, our partners at Women's Economic Ventures. This has been a challenging process inasmuch as what we're trying to do is reach out to some nearly five thousand businesses who are in profound distress, looking and strategizing for every kind of work they can get in customer services and what can they do to stay alive. And at the same time, we're badgering them about W nine forms and tax returns and God knows what else to make sure they comply with the system. The patience that the team and the leadership has exercised has been extraordinary. The patience the businesses have exercised is outstanding. We're thrilled that the board is willing to go this extra mile to figure out how we can fund all of them for whom we are able to make eligible. This will put an important twenty-three or four million dollars into the community. It circulates quickly through the community. It supports not only these businesses, but others. We're wholly supportive of this project and of the expansion. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Really appreciate it and also appreciate serving on that board to hear all the great things that our our businesses are doing and trying to troubleshoot, brainstorm, and how do we keep our businesses open here? So thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from our Board of Supervisors for either Bruce or Paul? Yes, Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. This is just for small businesses, is that correct?
Yes, we define that with businesses with less than two million dollars in revenue and more than twenty-five thousand. The average was well under a million dollars, in fact, and more of this, under a hundred thousand dollars in revenue. We allowed the larger up to two million because there are some small manufacturers who might have as few as six or eight employees but are selling expensive products, so some of their revenue goes up. But yes, the preponderance of these firms were two and three and four employee businesses with under a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I I think that's excellent. I know that the small businesses are really kind of the backbone of our economy, and we do want to support them. And they are probably the ones that are being hurt the most too. You know, they don't have much of a bottom line to begin with, so I I definitely support this. And I was glad that we did include criteria for minority business-owned, women-owned businesses as well as those in disadvantaged communities. So my my guess is if we're looking at funding all the rest, everyone will get it, it won't have that prioritization anymore. The question I have is, is, does it make sense to reopen the application period? Because I do know some businesses that missed it and wishes, you know, wished that they could get in on this. I I realize it's a process and it's a lot of the work to vet all of these. But since we only have a certain amount of money, the idea of reopening it, what do, what does staff and Bruce, what do you think of that?
I would defer to staff on that one, and I'd be happy to hop in after that, if Paul wants to come in.
Thank you.
Yeah, supervisor, we we are planning to do a formal review as we're wrapping up here. I can tell you that the effort and outreach and time associated with another round of applications would be very challenging. And so we would take that into consideration as we review and make recommendations moving forward.
But it is something that we have explored and will continue to explore. Thank you.
Have you heard from some also, as I have, that missed the deadline?
In our case, at EDC, we've heard from some, but surprisingly and happily, very few of the calls that we've received where we didn't hear about this, we would like to get in. I I could do a check. We were receiving and managing some two hundred phone calls a day for what is well over a month or more, not all through that period. And I can think of fewer than instances, and I could count on one hand, of of calls that I heard about that we didn't hear when we're looking to get in. That doesn't mean that they weren't there, I just haven't heard it a lot.
And and it does say a lot for the great outreach that was done. I know there are a lot of different ways of outreach to those businesses was done. And there is definitely a tremendous benefit, just as was mentioned in the in the staff presentation of the new connections that were made as a result of that. The folks that who weren't, didn't have their business license now will. And I I think there's a lot of benefit, and they all will know about EDC, VC too.
This is Bob. I would support reopening it.
Okay, thank you very much. It's all we can, to, it'll be all in consideration as we put this through. I'd like to see if we can get a motion to approve to receive and file the update.
Did Bob make the motion or did it?
I would show move.
Okay, it's been moved by Supervisor Huber and second by Supervisor Zaragoza. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Yes, so that motion has been approved unanimously. So thank you very much. That closes up our COVID nineteen items. Yes, Supervisor Huber.
I just wanted to make a quick comment on this item, if you don't mind.
Please, go ahead.
I'm very much in favor of this item. On behalf of our business owners in this county, I thank you and the the county CEO and staff. This topic is very important to me, and the fact that we found a way to make COVID assistance available upon application and not a lottery is amazing. Our business will have more certainty now instead of hoping and waiting for a lottery. I'm sure they will be grateful as I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you, supervisor.
Thank you very much, supervisor. Okay, so that concludes the priority items of the COVID nineteen. Appreciate everyone who's been waiting for public comments. We will now start our public comments. And we will be providing two minutes for public comments. So I'll pass this on to the clerk of the board for calling the names.
Could I ask how many public comments we have?
We have eight public comments.
We have eight.
And the first one is John Ziegler.
Okay, John Ziegler.
Thank you, Supervisor Long. I would first like to state that I am very glad to see that most of the board there now realizes the mask mandate is not legitimate and does not need to be abided by since no masks are being used there today, which is great since they don't need to be. But I do wonder why we have the meeting closed to the general public if you're able to meet in closed doors with no masks. Obviously, that decision has been political from the start and is not a health-related matter. I would like to congratulate the board on raising some important subjects, even though you've done so very poorly and not gotten any answers. And the reality here is, with regard to the false positives, read the New York Times. Read the New York Times. The New York Times just blew apart Governor Newsom's entire plan because the test is not reliable, and it's absolutely astonishing that your expert didn't even read the New York Times and thinks we have a false negative problem. We have a massive false positive problem, and that's why we're never going to reach any of these standards. The goalposts have been moved far beyond anyone's reach. As far as public schools and the waivers, did you notice that there are no public schools that have received the waiver from Dr. Levin? That's because the teachers' unions have made it impossible. I've spoken to our school superintendent, and they tell me this is a sham, just like the pool openings was a sham from Dr. Levin. And as far as playgrounds are concerned, if you want to open playgrounds, it's very easy. Just announce that you're not going to enforce the absurd ban on using playgrounds. That ends the, there. This is not that difficult. If you guys had any courage and any brains, you'd be able to figure it out. But thank you for at least asking the right subjects, even though the questions are incorrect, the answers are insufficient. And thank you also for not wearing masks because you've just exposed what a fraud that whole thing is. Thank you so much, and I'll talk to you next time after being way too long.
Thank you for your comments. I do want to make sure it's clear that as I sit here today, I do have my mask when and anytime I'm going around anywhere. I personally am wearing a mask. I wanted to make sure this is clear. This is not a political issue, it's a health issue. I also have been told that they can't hear me when I'm having my mask, so I have taken it off while I'm speaking. I just wanted to clarify for my own personal in case anyone tries to use that against me. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next item.
Lorena Saravardi? Sorry, I butchered your name.
Lorena, you are on Zoom. If you can hear me, see me, Lorena? I don't see her popping up on the screen.
Heather Schmidt?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Oh, she's there. Hi, Lorena. Thank you so much.
All right, um, on August twenty-nine, The Gate Handit is an online newspaper reported that the CDC on August twenty-sixth quietly updated its COVID nineteen numbers. Only nine thousand two hundred and ten Americans have died from COVID nineteen alone, which makes only six percent of all the deaths occur. Okay, now, the rest died of different su- serious illnesses. Now, since, you know, we had our first, first speaker, Mr. Sinclair, I think, Sinclair. He said the new, the, the New York paper also, uh, reported that in the newspaper. And I wanted to tell you that there is no pandemic. There is no reason for Ventura County to have an emergency order, right? So, as of now, because CDC has given us the right actual numbers, you are committing fraud and fraud is a felony. A felony carries a prison sentence. Every single governor, every single, uh, mayor or board supervisor members are committing fraud. There are other governors that are reopening the faces. And now you're gonna sigh with Newsom making tears to our faces where we have to be there for twenty-one days in each one. And there are four faces in one, I mean, sorry, four tears in one face. Okay, so this is not about health anymore. This is a political issue, right?
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. The next, uh, person to speak?
Next, we have Heather Schmidt.
Heather Schmidt? Your name has been called. You're on Zoom or audio?
And she did not dial in.
She did not dial in. Okay, next item, next person.
Next speaker is Deborah Baber.
You are on video? Hello.
Am I on? I don't see myself yet. There we go. Excellent. Good morning. Today is a brilliant day because every thinking American, every thinking Ventura County resident should be singing and marching in the streets. Why? Because the COVID pandemic that never was is over. The CDC announced that COVID-only death rate is only six percent. Six percent of related, of COVID-only deaths. That's fewer than ten thousand people in the entire United States. That means that in Ventura County alone, that is only sad as it is. Six people, just six people. That's it. It is not the number of one hundred and fifteen. But this is why we're celebrating. Take off your masks, folks. Take them off. Hug your family, your friends and neighbors. Go to church or temple. Visit your mom or dad in the hospital. Senior center, hold their hands again. Look into their eyes. Share a smile and be happy once more. Open your businesses. Live your lives again as free and healthy Americans in the greatest country on earth. One of the hardest things for people to do like you is to admit when they are wrong. But with COVID, everyone should rejoice that the numbers that cause such memory art misery are wrong. To all elected officials, champion we the people who elected you. Lead the parade. Get out in front and make Ventura County great again. Take back the high ground of happiness and prosperity. Show us the way to a swift, long-lasting recovery and to a Ventura County renaissance. Let freedom ring. Let it ring. We're free. Let's hear it, everybody. Let freedom ring. Bravo. God bless America.
Thank you for your comments. Next up?
Next, we have Hesu Whitton.
Hesu, you're on video? Are they on? Please, if you can see and hear us, please begin. I am seeing only standby.
Uh, their microphone is not connected, so they do not have a microphone.
Okay, Hesu, if you could reconnect for audio, we will come back to you. So, if we can go with the next one?
Next one is Sahari Torres.
She is on phone.
And they did not dial in either.
Okay, next would be?
Next is Marcos Vargas, who is also not dialed in.
Okay.
Uh, next one we do have dialed in is Patricia Lacy.
Can you hear me?
Is this Patricia?
Oh, that's Hesu.
Oh, Hesu. Okay, go ahead, Hesu.
We lost them.
We lost them? Okay.
We do have Patricia Lacy on.
Let's do Patricia then. Thank you. Patricia, are you online or on the phone? Can you hear us? I know it is hard to navigate the phone and Zoom in with our offices closed to come in personally. Nope. Okay, uh, do we have Hesu back on? No? Okay, so Sarah's phone, she hasn't dialed in. And Marcos Vargas? Phone's not on? Uh, the caller ending in one, two, two, two. Are they on?
They should be.
If you are and you can hear me, you can start?
I'm not sure what's going on.
Okay, is there a caller with a blocked number? I apologize. It's a little frustrating with technology as it is. Do we have the person?
Hello, good morning.
Hello, good morning. Could you state your name for us?
Yes, my name is.
I'm sorry, you're, I, we couldn't hear. Your name is? Hello? Did we just lose her?
They're connected. We should be able to hear them. I'm not sure.
Can you check to make sure, uh, ma'am, that your speaker is not muted? Perhaps you are talking, but we can't hear you.
And now they've hung up the phone.
And now we've hung up.
But we do have one, two, two, two.
Okay. Caller.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you state your name, please?
My name is Patricia Lacy. I am the proud daughter of Stanley Zurco. And I'd like to say good morning to Supervisors Long, Bennett, Parks, Huber and Zaragoza. My father and I spoke to you in the fall of twenty nineteen requesting help to release him from a forced conservatorship in Ventura County. We were ignored and my father was told to end his speech as his time was up. The microphone was turned off as he was speaking. He was a hundred and two years old. He was disrespected. He handwrote, he handwrote over a hundred letters and speeches, all notarized, asking for help, yet he was deemed incompetent, violating his civil rights. He did not receive any replies. I'm sending his handwritten speeches to the board to be filed in this meeting agenda along with transcripts from the August eleventh, twenty twenty court hearing, which shows bias. The perpetrators not only have contributed to the deterioration of my father's health and life. His estate has been mismanaged and confiscated. My father, Mr. Zurco, could not handle the torture, torment and loss of his life savings controlled by the court that he took his last breath, knowing that Ventura County allowed a vulnerable elderly gentleman to be victimized, tortured and left to die, turning a blind eye to the perpetrators. My father's life could have been saved. The Board of Supervisors could have made that difference. Your status as supervisor is mandate reporting this abuse to APS. It remains unquestionable as to the accomplishment of this order. In requesting the judge to release funds to bury my father, it was denied. Although attorney's fees over sixty-three thousand dollars were approved by Judge Lund for Mr. Robert Baskin's unwarranted charges, who was the court-appointed conservator of his estate. He never once spoke or met my father. No funds are due Mr. Baskin with validation, yet as he stated, he gets what he wants from the judge. The financial elder abuse continues. While my father was speaking to the Board of Supervisors last year, the microphone was turned off. During his pleading for your help, the Board of Supervisors told him his time was up. His life ended. He needed you.
Ma'am, thank you so much for your comments. Thank you. Um, it's two minutes and I do know that our CEO's office has been in reach with you and is talking about this matter. So, thank you. Our last speaker, I believe, is Hesu, who is on Zoom. Hesu, if you could start? Well, let's wait till he comes up on screen. Hesu? Clerk?
I think they must be having technical, okay, they disconnected their microphone.
Okay, the microphone is there.
There we go.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, Hesu?
Hello?
Hello. I'm so glad to hear your voice.
Oh, jeez, I, I hope it doesn't me out, but.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
We all know the song, "You better watch out, you better not try," right? Because Santa Claus is watching. Every child knows that Santa Claus is watching and we should be afraid because he's seeing if we're gonna be bad or good. So, fear is how religions have always made us compliant. They engineer our compliance with fear. Religions have always done it. We're afraid of the invisible. You know, God's gonna strike you down. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In the Nuremberg, in the Nuremberg trials, they asked the Germans how they got the German people to comply. And they said, "It's really simple. There's nothing unique about the J-" There's nothing unique about the German people. It can be done in any society, any form of government. Just tell the people they have something they have to be afraid of and point at that fear and you can get people to do anything you want. Well, now, you know, FDR luckily said, he realized terrible totalitarianism. And he said, "The only thing we have to fear is fear itself." And so now we're being made to be afraid of an invisible virus that the CDC just released. And there's only six percent of the people are actually dying from this virus. Ninety-four percent of the people have immune compromised. They're dying with COVID, but not from COVID. The cases are irrelevant. You know, when we've had flu or colds in the past seasons, we never rate, you know, we never list how many cases of the cold we have. We, we list how many people are dying from this. And so, you know, everyone else has severe co- comorbidities. You know, we're, we're now told that we should be afraid of.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Um, I apologize to those that were online or couldn't connect and, and be, uh, providing your comments. I would like to urge everyone who wasn't able to connect or so forth to submit your comments to clerkoftheboard@ventura.org. Again, you can submit any comment to our Board of Supervisors any day. Uh, simply email at clerkoftheboard@ventura.org. Um, we will be working with everybody in our IT department and Clerk of the Boards to make sure that all is heard. And, um, I'm sorry that we have to rely on technology right now to hear a public comment. So, thank you very much. I, I know we are all get frustrated with Zoom sometimes and, and so forth. So, thank you. One item I did not get to, which was thirty-one, it's a receive and file a plan to implement the CalFresh Restaurant Meals Program in Ventura County as part of our COVID nineteen food service to our seniors. Melissa Livingston, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning again, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. The item before you is, uh, to allow us to engage in the new realms of understanding with local restaurants for CalFresh Restaurant Meal Program. CalFresh Restaurant Meal Programs are, there's oversight by our California Department of State, uh, Social Services as well as the USDA. And that, that program specifically is focusing, providing households an opportunity to purchase low-cost discounted meals. Um, and most specifically, healthy and nutritious meals from our local restaurants. Uh, the focus of this program would be on, um, older adults, sixty-five or older, um, with potential disabilities as well as our homeless, uh, population. And the recognition is these groups, uh, face the greatest barriers and the opportunity to purchase and prepare food, um, in home environments. And so, this program would benefit us by, one, providing affordable, uh, food options to our, um, those populations. Our vulnerable populations, the same ones we've served throughout the pandemic, as well as support our local restaurants, jobs and our economy. We have done a comprehensive demographic and, um, geographic assessment of, uh, this population that we serve. About seventeen thousand individuals, households would be eligible for this. And we've done that assessment to see where those individuals reside as well as overlaying restaurants in those areas. So, our plan would be to do outreach for those restaurants that reside in the areas where, where these individuals live. We would be asking, uh, those restaurants that were interested to, um, apply with the USDA. Uh, an application would be approved and then we would be able to engage in an MOU with them. Uh, again, the agreement would be for low-cost meals. Uh, there would be no sales tax or no gratuities, um, that would be, um, required, uh, for those transactions. So, uh, we also will be doing outreach and leveraging, um, other community-based organizations as well as our AAA partners. So, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, did anyone, any supervisors have any questions? I know that this meal program has been very instrumental with COVID nineteen. Do we know how many meals through the restaurants we have served with, uh, Project, uh?
There was one, there was one point seven.
Yes, thank you. Project Great Plates.
Yeah, between the, the AAA programs as well as the Great Plates program.
Okay, so I just stating that the success of those programs and that we can do this, uh, with CalFresh is just fabulous. So, I just want to say thank you.
So, Madam Chair, Melissa, I think it's an excellent program. It's gonna help our seniors, as you mentioned, and the individual with disabilities and homeless. So, I think it's good, you know, and that, uh, be able to afford, uh, this meals and fresh, you know, restaurant meals that are so important to them. So, I'd like to make motion to approve if there's no other, um.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve by Supervisor Zaragoza. Can I get a second? Supervisors, online?
Second?
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. It's been first by Supervisor Zaragoza and second by Supervisor Parks. Roll call, please, to, uh, receive and file.
You're a baby.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yes, and that motion is approved. And, uh, hearing a baby's cry is wonderful to hear. So, thank you. Right? It's another yes to the program. So, thank you very much. Okay. We do have a time certain on, uh, item thirty-seven, which is a receive and file the fiscal year twenty twenty-one revised recommended budget for the County of Ventura's General Fund, yeah, along with other departments. So, I'll pass this to our amazing financial guru. Uh, Kay and also, uh, Mike Powers. So, do you want to start, Mike?
Yes, thank you, Chair Long. Okay, thank you, Chair Long, board members, community members, county team. Uh, so when we last met in June, we were talking about the impacts of the pandemic on our local economy, state and federal budgets and our budget as well. And had identified, uh, roughly about a forty million dollar shortfall. Uh, your board afforded us additional time to do more analysis on available resources and, uh, we're very pleased today that we'll be able to. And, uh, we're very pleased today that we'll be able to report a balanced budget that does sustain services, critical services for our community and health, safety, and social services. And it's a combination of state and federal resources, pension savings, our taxpayer support, as well as our managers and our workforce helping to manage the costs that have gotten us to this place. So, uh, we'll get to it, and I'll turn it over to Kay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Chair Long, board members, Mr. Powers, Kay Mann from the CEO's office, here to present the twenty-one fiscal year revised preliminary slash recommended budget. This has been a little longer budget process than our normal years. And, uh, so, just a little recap. On, on June ninth, your board approved, uh, or rather, we brought to your board the proposed preliminary recommended budget. And on June sixteenth, your board approved the, the preliminary recommended budget. Uh, it was a status quo-based budget, and it allowed us to have the spending authority that we needed to move forward into fiscal twenty-one until such time that we could come back to your board with a budget that you could adopt. And so we are here today with the revised preliminary budget. It contains updated financial information. Back in June, there was a lot of uncertainty regarding the budget. And at this time where, uh, we had the opportunity to wait for these few months, it has allowed us the additional time to quantify revenue loss, to clarify funding support from the state. And also, it has allowed us the opportunity to receive some additional guidance from the Department of Treasury on the CARES Act. Uh, and that, and that guidance is ongoing, and, uh, so we, we continue to watch that. Uh, it also gave us time to identify the ongoing resources that were needed to respond to the pandemic. So after this, the next step is on September fourteenth, uh, when we're going to schedule the budget hearings and, uh, the adoption of the budget. Our revised preliminary budget has appropriations of two point four five billion. That is a six point one percent increase from the fiscal nineteen-twenty adopted budget. Uh, one of the items that is a little different this year is that we have one-time COVID-related appropriations that are included in the budget. And, um, county-wide, that's forty-six million. And so if we exclude that one-time appropriations from the budget, our actual increase is four point one percent. For a general fund, our appropriations are at one point two billion. That's an increase of four point seven percent. And again, if we exclude the one-time COVID-related appropriations, uh, we are actually fairly flat, and the increase is point nine percent. These one-time COVID-related appropriations, uh, relate to rental assistance program, the motor vouchers, and, uh, the Great Plates Program. For non-general fund, we have an increase of seven point five percent. And that's mainly related to capital projects at various departments, at watershed, at airports, uh, and at VCMC. Our general fund, general purpose revenues are at four hundred and fifty-nine million. That's a five percent increase from our current year adopted. And again, we have thirteen million dollars of one-time CARES Act funded, that, uh, funding that is included in there. And if we exclude that, uh, the increase is actually two point zero percent. Our preliminary budget contains a number of assumptions. And one of those is that the salaries and benefits, uh, do include negotiated salary increases. And also, um, we had lower retirement rates for fiscal twenty-one, which have resulted in a retirement savings of some forty million dollars, about twenty-seven million in the general fund. So we, uh, adjusted the general fund departments to incorporate some rate smoothing, which allowed us to put twelve and a half million dollars in a pension mitigation reserve. We'll speak to, uh, that a little bit more, uh, in the next slide. The budget also contains some impacts, uh, from COVID-nineteen. We had a reduction in some revenues, including realignment and problem seventy-two. That, uh, it's a net reduction of twenty-four point six million. And that represents a twenty-six million dollar reduction in realignment, in realignment revenues. Uh, it's offset by ten million dollars of state backfill. And also includes eight point six million reduction in problem seventy-two funding. The revised budget also includes twenty-three million in CARES Act revenue. This represents mainly cost of department staff substantially dedicated to the COVID effort, as well as disaster service workers. And the funding is included, uh, in departments such as public health, area agency on aging, and sheriff and probation.
Madam Chair, while she's jumping to another slide, I just wanted to say I really appreciate the smoothing efforts, um, that are in there regarding pensions because, uh, everything we've done, uh, I think, uh, trying to smooth and keep things sustainable is, it really has served the county well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you Supervisor, and, and to that point, as you can see in the slide there, there's a couple of reasons we felt this was important to do. One is because we don't wanna base budgets on an extraordinary event, uh, because we know that's gonna change the very next year and the year after, and that, that's not good for sustaining services. And there's likely fluctuation in the market in terms of pension returns. We saw it just last year, uh, with the pension, uh, fund returning about two point seven percent of earnings compared to seven point two five assumed grade. So, uh, that's just one example. So we think it just builds in, uh, long-term fiscal strength and stability, uh, for our services. Uh, it, it does mean that our departments, uh, you know, really, uh, had to absorb a bit of a reduction there, but, uh, we appreciate them doing that and continuing to manage their, their budgets and, and keep things stable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did have a question in regards to, um, funding, and that's on our property tax. Do we know what percentage of property tax we collected this year?
We, uh, it was in line, uh, with prior years, uh, close to ninety-six, ninety-seven percent, I believe. But we can get that for you, the exact numbers.
And just because I know that there, there are people that have connected, contacted us in our, um, district in regards to paying, uh, property tax in the problem with COVID-nineteen and unemployment, and their businesses being closed. Um, the concern is that we would not be collecting, uh, taxes, uh, due, due to those reasons. And so, we're not showing currently that that's an, of an issue?
Uh, no, uh, we can, so double check. The last report I saw, I believe it, it was at about ninety-six percent. Uh, we can check with the treasure tax collector, but.
And Kay, I think, I think it was excellent. I think, uh, that we, uh, that actually our taxes came in, uh, right on the money or probably even better, you know, than, than what we expected.
Yeah, they did. And, uh, you know, like, again, those collections were in April. So I think, uh, uh, I think part of that was bec- uh, because it really happened before. Most people had already paid or had planned to pay. And so, uh, I think that was part of it. Uh, this may be more of an issue for the current fiscal year, so we'll see how the December collections go.
I appreciate that, and I, I know that our department heads will be looking at that very closely. Um, I just am very cautious from, based on the, the new revolutions of, uh, this tiered program and so forth and, and what we're hearing in our office. But, um, I know you guys are on it. I just wanted to make sure I brought up that concern.
Yep, that's a good point. Thank you.
So on our retirement, um, as I mentioned, uh, we had rather an extraordinary decrease in our retirement rates, which is, I think, somewhat unusual in itself. And, um, uh, it was a decrease of five point one seven percent. And as I mentioned before, uh, that translated to approximately forty million dollar reduction in retirement costs. And twenty-seven million of that is in the general fund. And as Mike explained, um, because we didn't want to base the budgets on a one-time extraordinary decrease, we, uh, internally smoothed the rates and, uh, and we increased the rates for the general fund departments for them from the twenty-three point three to the twenty-five point nine percent, which allowed us to set aside twelve and a half million, uh, in the pension mitigation reserve. Again, uh, this, um, reserve will be used to mitigate future pension cost increases resulting from market fluctuations, uh, or changes in actuarial assumptions. And it still protects our delivery of core services. Just a little summary, uh, on the CARES Act. Uh, we received one hundred and forty-seven point six million dollars, uh, in CARES Act funding. And it was received back in April of twenty-twenty. An additional nineteen and a half million has been allocated from the state. To date, we have received six and a half million dollars of that. And the fiscal twenty-one budget contains fifty-four point two million dollars, um, in terms of the revenue that is budgeted from CARES Act. Uh, and that, as I mentioned before, uh, is for rental, uh, assistance, uh, housing for vulnerable populations, meals for seniors, et cetera. Uh, twenty-three million dollars, um, was used, uh, to fund specifically COVID-related expenditures for fiscal twenty-one. The Business Assistance Grant Program, uh, you ju- uh, you just approved, um, uh, twenty-four million dollars, um, in total. And, um, um, and the Rental Assistance Program was approved, uh, in the amount of eleven point four million dollars.
And, and just to make sure, as we're tracking all of our expenses, we, um, we're making sure that we hit those criteria so that we're utilizing the fundings needed for the community without sending, uh, unused money back, a great amount of unused money back, correct?
Uh, yes, most definitely. Um, a little bit later in the presentation, uh, uh, we'll have an estimated spending plan, uh, for, uh, the CARES Act. So, thank you. I have gone way too far. Thank you. That won't be a surprise anymore. Oh, well, okay. Terms of our financing, Mike, do you wanna speak to that a little bit?
This is a great slide, by the way.
It's our favorite.
Yeah, right.
So, uh, we just want to say that, uh, uh, again, when we went back to the rating agencies in May, um, uh, both Moody's, uh, and Standards and Poor's affirmed our AAA long-term credit rating. Uh, and that allowed us to refinance our twenty-thirteen A lease revenue bonds and, um, for the hospital replacement win. And that allowed us, uh, to have a net present value savings of thirty-four million dollars, which translates to about two million dollar reduction in debt service annually.
And Madam Chair, and, and Mike, I always brag about our credit rating. That's so important, that AAA long-term credit rating, it can save us a tremendous amount of money. And I've said it over and over again, it's like the FICO score at home. If you have a seven hundred, eight hundred FICO score, you save a lot of money in the long run. And we're in that position now, so that's, that's really, really great, you know? Thank you, Mike.
Uh, and also, um, uh, as, as we have mentioned before, that on an annual basis, uh, we do issue a trans for short-term, uh, cash flow borrowing. And, uh, which is mainly to pre-fund our retirement contribution, which, uh, allows us to save about six million dollars, um, annually. Uh, and so we bring that into the general fund. And, uh, we were able to, uh, our actual interest rate, uh, on, uh, our fiscal twenty-one trans is point one nine percent.
Yeah, it was a, it's a competitive bid. It was one of the lowest in the market. And, uh, we were excited to see that, uh, reflection of the good credit rating and your board's support. And, uh, Chair Long was with us during those, uh, those presentations. During COVID, there was quite a bit of uncertainty, as you can imagine. So those meetings were much more, um, intense and in-depth, and the auditor's office was right by our side as well, digging through all the data, because that's what they wanna see. Look in the CAFR, look at our finances. And, uh, and this, this is, uh, this is, this is the result.
Well, and just to state that, um, they understand with all the wildfires that we've had the last four years and the difficulties, uh, we have met as a community, but yet our revenue and our budgets are still stable. And the question I had asked before about property tax was really hitting on this item as well, is that we are at a ninety-five, ninety-six percentile of people paying their property tax. That is something that we can't just lift. It's actually state mandated, but it, it provides a consistency for the services. And, uh, I think it shows very strongly in our ratings that those that lend money also believe that too. So, thank you for the good work of everybody.
Uh, and that was, uh, Chair Long, and one of the questions that was asked by the rating agencies was, uh, how were our property tax collections? So.
And, and so on, on this, uh, what you can see here is really just a summary of the ways in which, uh, your team and, and your board is able to cover that shortfall we talked about at the outset. And first, we did receive ten million dollars in realignment backfill from the state, thanks to the advocacy of your board, as well as our state legislators. Uh, it was, uh, it was a good result. It was a partial backfill, but, uh, obviously very meaningful. Uh, there was some reduction in MHSA funding, but also because of the good fiscal management of behavioral health, they had additional MHSA dollars so that they could, uh, plug that in and, and sustain services there. As Kay mentioned earlier, there's twenty-three million, uh, in CARES funding for this fiscal year included in department's budgets. We have the two million in debt service savings. The pension savings also is a major contributor. And a part that we didn't talk about is that part of that's because for our unfunded liability, we have a fifteen-year amortization as opposed to a thirty-year like CalPERS. So it's like a fifteen versus a thirty-year mortgage. Uh, you, you pay more in the short run, but, but you get a benefit, uh, as well sometimes like we are, uh, this year. Taxpayers are a huge part of it, uh, of course, that's where we get our funding from. And the, and the rate that they're continuing to pay at, our community is, is really helping us sustain tremendously. I think we're just off, I think, like Kay said, by about a half percent, maybe one percent at most, which is amazing during this challenging time. We budgeted at a three point five percent increase. Uh, it's actually about three point nine one percent is the, is the role. I see, uh, Mr. Goodman back there. Partners very closely with us on these projections. And then our departments managing the costs, staying within their budget, just roll, and their workforce rolling up their sleeves. So, um, that's how we're able to, uh, to get the, uh, get to the balanced budget. Thank you.
Supervisors, do you have any questions on this?
You know.
Supervisor Parks.
Uh, thank you, and I agree with, uh, what Supervisor Bennett was saying also regarding the smoothing and the pension. And, uh, sometimes it's good and sometimes it's not so good, but today, uh, we did have some good news on that. And I was also thinking of, uh, one of the reasons why our county is faring better than the cities, as well as the state of California. And, uh, that in part is due to the fact that we are not so linked to sales tax revenue. And that's because of a policy we have at the county, uh, to build in the cities. And that's where you see all the cash registers. They say, you know, that's where all the retail is, as a fact. And so, cities are getting those tax dollars and relying on them a lot more. And then the county is more specific to property tax. So, um, part of it is the system, but a, a lot of it also has to do with conservative financing. And so, really appreciate the budgeting that we have been doing over many years. And I don't think we saw the slide that talked about our reserve fund yet. I don't know if that's coming. But, uh, that is something that we can all be proud of too, that we have. And I, I don't wanna take any fanfare away from others, but it is nice to see that while we are maintaining a balanced budget, we are also able to maintain a significant, um, uh, reserves in our budget for when we need them. So, I, I appreciate that we are able to do that. And, um, I wanna thank staff for their hard work, 'cause it doesn't come easy. Uh, there is belt tightening going on, and appreciate the, the. Uh there is belt tightening going on and appreciate the the conservative view of our budgets all throughout the departments of our county.
Thank you, Supervisor. Hi, Supervisor, there it goes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's exactly what I wanted to share, because uh in the budget shortfall, we see that we had rail limits funding and CARES funding debt savings and so forth. But uh uh right in the bottom, the last boat help uh boat um is that the departments manage their costs. And I think that's extremely important. So I want to thank all the the department heads and and what we have now, nine thousand plus employees. They helped tremendously in the budget shortfall, so I think it's extremely important.
Well, we we appreciate that, Supervisor, and I know they do. And just to give you a sense, uh they've had positive fund balance uh returns the last many years. And last year was a tough one, fiscal year from a financial standpoint, operational for our community. Your department still managed to have an overall positive fund balance of sixteen point five million.
And they stepped up to help us, just which I think is important. Thank you.
Continue, please.
Bob, I I want to say thank you to everyone for their hard work on the on the budget. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Eber. Uh just to recap on our total budget uh by uh by program area, the two point five billion, uh fifty one percent is dedicated to health and human services, twenty percent public safety, uh another eight percent for fire. And um eleven percent is of our environment, environmental balance of watershed protection Another view of the budget, this is by fund. Uh the general fund represents almost half of our total county budget, followed by VCMC at about twenty five percent. Our FTEs, our total budgeted FTEs are just a little over nine million. We had an increase of some two percent from fiscal nineteen twenty. The general fund was up by forty nine FTEs and non-general funds by one hundred and twenty five. The forty nine in the general fund uh really relate to public health uh and area agency on aging, twenty five positions in public health to respond uh to COVID effort, uh Calwer's Home Visiting Program and the lead and the lead abatement program in public health. Uh and we had eleven positions uh added in area agency on aging for the uh older adults program and Aging and Disability Resource Center. We had four uh positions increase in CEO's office, which included the diversity and inclusion officer position that was approved by your board back in July. For non-general funds, our IT department, after doing an operational review, uh which is something that departments do uh on an annual basis uh anyway, uh but they decided um that they would delete some seventeen vacant positions. Department of Child Support Services deleted eighteen vacant positions. VCMC uh had an increase in positions, which was mainly related to the addition of per diem nurses and clinical staffing requirements, uh the CSU and IPU expansion uh and also uh resulting from uh increased volume and expanded operations. So here is, here is our unassigned fund balance slide. Uh please note that we uh last year, fiscal twenty, we were at thirteen point one percent. And we now stand at thirteen point two percent. As a result of our fund balance, we were able to move two point two five million uh into our unassigned fund balance, and so it now stands at a hundred and fifty two million. And that represents thirteen point two percent of our budget after uh we uh exclude our one-time COVID appropriations.
Thank you for bringing up this slide. Um I don't remember Supervisor Bennett, were you around in fiscal year two thousand and two? I just remember you always comment on this slide, so I was giving you the opportunity if you wanted. Okay, in hearing none, I I just appreciate all that our board back in two thousand and two has done and our CEO's office for uh really steamheading this and making sure that we have the appropriate fund ratio. So thank you.
Our total reserves are at two hundred and forty six million. And our total assigned reserves are at eighty three point seven. Our program mitigation is part of that eighty three, uh and that stands at fifty three million dollars right now. And the twenty six, part of that twenty six million that's increased is the fourteen point two five million increase to program mitigation as a result of our ending fund balance. And that also, um and twelve and a half million of that is the pension mitigation reserve that we just had assigned.
I do want to announce that we're hearing some issues. For anyone who's watching this broadcast, that our microphone is going in and out a little bit. We will at the podium. You can hear us now, because I'm talking louder with my, out my mask. But I apologize for the inconsistency of the voice. Yeah, if we'll continue, but after this, we will do a break to try to swap out microphones. Thank you.
Here we have some uh key projects and programs.
Yes, uh we do. Just got a few highlights. There's many more than this, but we know what a priority for health services are for your board, particularly crisis services. And so we're very pleased to, VCMC is expanding the inpatient psychiatric unit by six beds. Uh again, recall, it's only one or two left in our county, so it plays a really important role. Uh appreciate Dr. Finkhauser and and Bill and and the team uh there with that, Michael. Uh and also, they're expanding the crisis stabilization unit by four chairs as well, and those two work in harmony. So uh a good improvement during a challenging time. Also, of course, many individuals face homelessness in our community. We're continuing to fund uh the year-round shelter in Ventura and working with the city of Oxnard. They're in the development stages of their permanent year-round shelter. They have the same uh partner as Ventura than we do, Mercy House, who's doing a wonderful job of operating our shelter here. And they're operating the Oxnard Temporary Shelter. Uh with the general plan as well, as we'll hear more about later this afternoon, we've done the cost estimate. Decided to not uh in the budget. We did do cost estimates of about thirty six million for the implementation program for the first five years, and these are just very high-level uh ballpark estimates. And that depends on the timing of the implementation and priorities and roughly estimating about two point two million uh for existing uh programs. And there may be some uh grants and federal and state funding available as well uh for many of those programs.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. Thank you. Uh we know, of course, elections is a huge priority, and we're working very closely with Mr. Long and his team. And of course, uh will be a vote by mail uh election, but also uh we'll have um forty seven uh voting centers. That'll be open uh four days uh before and during and the day of the uh election. Uh and so a lot of work going on uh with the elections department and our office uh to prepare for that, uh including hiring uh several hundred staff to staff those centers and just make it to make it go smoothly. And there will be some additional costs, as you can see, potentially about nine point eight million. Uh possibly approximately three point two million in funding expected from federal and state resources. Uh that leaves about six point six million, and we expect those funds to come from uh a combination of our assigned reserves that Ms. Man just reported on, our assigned reserves, uh as well as some CARES Act funding for the election. At the same time, there's a lot going on, parallel processes here, our our twenty twenty census. Uh we're heading in the final stretch here, the final month. As you recall, uh our county is the number four in the state out of uh fifty eight counties. And so, but taking nothing for granted, trying to finish strong, everybody's really redoubling their efforts to get out uh to the community. Uh and especially those hard-to-county areas and get everybody counted, because it's so important to our community. Uh child support services, we are recommending a one-time uh post-preliminary adjustment of funding of uh five hundred thousand uh for them. Uh they have uh been uh cut by the state. Uh their their cut is actually much larger than that, but through good management and leveraging of state and federal resources, they'll be able to make this uh five hundred thousand go a lot farther. And that is so critical, because you know what they do is they help uh families and children get really critical funding. And it's up over fifty five some million dollars a year uh that they get for families in need in our in our community. So that that'll be a recommendation coming on the fourteenth. And then uh we will have some reductions in the gas tax revenue uh as well. Uh but there is some increase uh based on SB one also to help offset that. Next slide.
Can we just go to elections? I believe for roughly around seventy percent is mail-in ballots already. So I think that's a uh strength for us, because we're not getting hit with a huge cost. Um I think our community has uh seen that mail-in ballots really do work. Um and so I I appreciate all all that the election offices is doing. And then also the census, I mean, it it's a one-line bullet, but it is means so much in our community. Um I myself, I'm wearing a census T-shirt. I know that Supervisor Parks, I saw her with hers. Um just trying to spread the word as much as we can in regards to census and how valuable for budget. I know you guys have your shirts. You didn't get to do it, but um they're all here. We wear it either on the board or not. And uh you'll see it's, you'll see us there, but those are, if you could just show the T-shirt a little bit. Um we have our census T-shirts, so that when you see people around with those T-shirts, those are from the county really wanting to help our community. Oh, there you go. Yeah, you have to do it upside down.
There we go.
Okay, there you go. Thank you, John. I just really appreciate all the board's support on the census. It's it's huge. And uh VCCF and so forth are making sure that we get the funding we need for our community. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh we know housing is a priority for your boards. Uh the budget does contain a hundred thousand annual contribution to the Housing Trust Fund for a total of three hundred thousand over the next few years. Uh your board just approved the additional farmworker household assistance program matching up to two hundred and fifty thousand. And then Project Home Key, we heard, is making progress uh in the city of Oxnard. Next up, if we can have the next, thank you. Uh a lot of legislative efforts going on. Department of Juvenile Justice Realignment, we're going to come back to your board and walk through this with you. There's a lot of moving parts here. There's some pretty big changes that just came down over the weekend, despite a lot of advocacy. Uh this does represent a shift and a realigning of responsibilities uh in in some areas that are really working very well here locally. Our our juvenile programs are doing a wonderful job, so there's some concern here and also some cost shift to the counties. So more to be sorted out here, because it just happened at the eleventh hour. With a little bit more planning has been the criminal justice administrative fees. Uh these are some fees for uh you know criminal defendants and those who've been convicted. And I think that what the legislature wanted to do is uh to remove some of those, so they can put people on a better path going forward, more self-sustaining and path towards success. Uh but that would have a fiscal impact to counties. The good news is, this time when they proposed it, they did provide some backfill to counties, so we're pleased with that. And then bail reform, we're waiting on that for the twenty twenty election.
Well, and and just on the um SB eight two three, I just want to thank our state state officials for all they're doing, um and also our board supervisors for reaching out to try to give them the understanding of what the county's aspect is. Um we all want to take care of those youth in the best way possible. Um but how it gets funded and who's doing it, those are things that we were really concerned with. On the other item that was a big one was the AB six, um which is a settlement for the opiate claims. I'm just going to look and see how that is working, how that affects our um our board, our our work. And and there's some other things going into, but yeah, there's impacts at the state level really does hit our our community. So I appreciate all of you giving them the data they need to make uh good choices or better choices.
Thank you. Supervisor, maybe for the next slide here. So uh next up, we'll have uh Scott Powers, Senior Deputy CEO, come up and walk us through the estimated COVID spending plan. There's a lot of moving parts here, and Scott's been uh leading the charge, so you get away, Scott.
Scott, I'm going to ask you to test your microphone. We just switched microphones. And if you, the tall, skinny one, if you can just kind of push it down, so it's not in the video way. Thank you very much. It doesn't sound like it's on? Is it on on the hand?
Check. Better?
Okay.
I love to hold it.
I I won't, I promise, I won't make you sing.
Board members, Supervisor, um Long, Mr. CEO Powers, Scott Powers, County Executive Office. Before you, it's our latest projected spending plan for the coronavirus relief fund. As of today, uh these funds, as you know, are to be spent by the end of this year, by December thirtieth. Uh that means um cash out of the bank account, not necessarily obligated. So we, to your point Supervisor Long, are very aware of that time constraint we have. At the same time, we're working and 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 evaluating where our opportunities are at the federal level of what these funds could be for the following year. So we're in a, we're in an interesting position right now of of making these funds available, spent. At the same time, uh a nest egg for the next year, pu- uh pushing into January and forward. So uh there are several unknowns uh also regarding this, and I mentioned future legislation, but also the the difficulty we're having with the treasury and the guidance and and understanding it and and further defining it, so that we can apply these funds to costs that we've experienced. So we are always working together as our group, our budget team. We've uh hired Ernest Young as a consultant. We've been with him. We're on the phone with him two to three times a week, planning this. And we have more work to do, but I want to assure you, we are in a good place and a good position compared to what we're hearing from other counties in that in that regard. So I'd like to walk you through some of the main uh details, some of the main tenants of 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 our plan. Uh I'll start with logistics, and logistics, you know, mainly run through OES. They've done the heroic effort and and right from the start in getting resources together. And so a lot of the funds for PPE and supplies were handled through uh through OES. In addition to the testing side, Barry Zimmerman led the strategic side, and OES really put the boots to the ground and put together the contracts, the labor and the needs associated with the testing, and continue to in our call, community colleges and at our fairground site. In addition to the public health tracing, and we have a forty million dollar there that will cover us through the rest of the year um at the same clip we're spending right now. So that's an important number we're tracking as well in terms of opportunities for next year. Um in county operations, on on the labor side, we've taken a large amount of efforts in deeming what's what is considered substantially dedicated. And in terms of what what costs can we can we cover that are associated with county labor and addressing the necessity of this COVID response. And that's kind of what the COVID uh the uh OIG guidance says is really, it has to be this necessary cost associated with COVID. And we're addressing that along with our DSWs and other costs. So we we are projecting through the, to the end of the year, which starts in March, so we're covering two fiscal years of thirty million dollars of costs that are internal, we'll say, not only labor but supplies as well. Uh on the homeless support side, this is covering actually uh three significant projects. One, of course, was Room Key, which was kicked us off, and and again, OES led that effort as as well as with community development in supporting that. And so that was a large effort, as well as um motel voucher program, which was just started about a month or two, a month or so ago. And and Project Home Key, which was just uh discussed earlier. And that Home Key funding is assuming two opportunities. One is in the West County, which we were just talking about the vagabonding, and also in the East County. So there's a four million dollars on for each side of the county for in case an opportunity arises for a hotel to be purchased. Uh and again, we have West County in in a good place right now. We're looking for East County opportunities as well. Uh on the senior support, uh that's again, is covering three pro- uh programs. Most um uh the 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 largest one is Great Plates Delivered, which is uh providing food and security and food to seniors and uh as well as senior nutrition program and the food pantry. Uh the largest portion of that thirty million dollars is Great Plates. Uh on the community support side, that's kind of the 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 big, you know, part of this, about, it's almost fifty million dollars of support to our community, your rental assistance, business assistance. What we're making our funds available from a supplemental supplemental perspective to cities. They are already getting some CRF funds, and they're already going through FEMA, but if they can't meet their needs with that, we'll be there to help them with that. And so we're we're standing up that program in the next week or two, and that would, that'll be before your board in the coming weeks. And also, uh we received a request for from the private uh hospitals for support, and we are still evaluating that. We have a, there was a ten million dollar ask. We we have that as a placeholder right now. We're still in this, in the efforts of um evaluating that. And um one other thing I want to point out on the business assistance program is, you know, this twenty four million dollars is significant, but it really isn't everything that's in this fund. Uh I would also call out Great Plates Delivery, which is in essence a business assistance program. It's funding uh over twenty restaurants to provide meals on a daily basis to over two thousand clients and delivery. So a- as as well as Room Key, so there there's. So as well as Room Key. So there's other aspects of these funds that are helping businesses. I just wanted to make that known. And then we have a placeholder for should legislation come. Every day, it's a quandary as to whether or not it will come, whether before the election or after the election. But it's really important, number one, is for the time extension. And that's kind of the low-hanging fruit here, in which everyone agrees this isn't ending December thirtieth, this pandemic. So in both sides of the discussion, they both are agreeing to that. So we're hoping to see that come to fruition. That would be really important to us. The lost revenue is a bonus. We would love lost revenue. We've lost, you know, over the last couple of years, well over thirty, forty million dollars in lost revenue when it comes to realignment, Prop one-seventy-two, et cetera. So that's a placeholder we think is a happy medium between where we are, what we have to spend, and what we need to keep available for further opportunities. And lastly, the FEMA match, which is FEMA is another caveat where, you know, is a different type of pandemic, a different type of disaster. So from a pandemic perspective, what FEMA will fund is still not defined. So we are working with EY on that as well. That concludes what I had to go through. I'm happy to take any more questions.
Scott, you know, the nonprofit hospitals, the tent mill, they need that money to get them right through the end of the year, is my understanding. You know, and from their own, you know, I talked to one of the CEOs of one of the hospitals, and he said, and I asked him, how about beyond, you know, the next four months? And they said, no, that just takes right to the end of the year from their own day because of COVID, you know, and so forth, but.
They're in the same position we are in that regard.
Yeah.
Understood, yes.
Yes, and we've been meeting with the hospital association and the private hospitals, and we know you have as well. And they have been great partners, to be sure, and they're carrying a big load, just like VCMC in Santa Paula, of dealing with COVID patients and being there to create surge capacity for us. So I think they'll help us too in that. Thank you. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And also just appreciate all of your staff being on those webinars, Zooms with the federal agencies to understand the CARES funding and how it can be utilized. Tracking that on a daily basis is very time-consuming. And I appreciate everyone's awareness of it and making sure that we're doing all we can for our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, Scott. And we're also working to make sure that we're prepared for the federal someday audit with this as well because these funds will be subject to that, and that's something that we're being, I think, thoughtful about as we move forward. And that's time well spent. In terms of their reserve too, I think that's so important, as Scott mentioned, just because there's some legislation that could say, well, your time to spend it is extended six to nine months, but you don't get any more funds. So we've got to make that last. So that's, we're trying to dial in that right point. But if in the next month or so it starts to look like there isn't that legislation, then we'll turn towards making sure our community is able to get the advantage of these funds appropriately. So we'll be continuing to monitor that on a daily basis, really. Okay, just thank you so much, Scott. And Scott, I'll be back in a minute. Want to just, you've seen a lot of this before, so I'm going to go very quickly through these next slides. It's just, those are numbers of CARES funding, but what's been done with it? You can see over ninety-one thousand people tested with those funds, contact tracing, ninety-nine percent contacted within twenty-four hours. Three-point-six million pieces of PPE. We've talked about the Great Plates, the home mail deliveries, one-point-seven million numbers. It's just such a huge number. But it's amazing that they're doing that. Project Room Key, you can see over four-hundred-and-fifty homeless housed. These are folks who are medically fragile or sixty-five and over. Increase in demand for services, and I want to highlight this too because, of course, just at a time when our resources were struggling with, there was more need in the community. And so we saw actually CalFresh was at as high as almost, I think, twelve to sixteen percent. Now it's still an increase of about eight percent. CalWorks was higher. Now it's an increase of about two percent. But Medi-Cal, we see that starting to rise. So as you can imagine, with the number of lost jobs and unemployment claims filed in the community, there's more need for services. And we, with your board's support and with this budget, we'll be able to continue to provide those services. And you've seen the rental business assistance. The fee waiver, just want to highlight that. So this is planning, building and safety, fire, other departments waiving fees to the tune of about one-point-six million. We estimate about five thousand businesses could benefit from this. We figure, you know, last thing a business needs right now that's struggling is to get an additional fee. So appreciate your board's support with that. And then just the disaster service workers, there's been over four-hundred-and-eighty county employees who've been reassigned. It's the all-hands-on-deck approach, whether it's helping with feeding seniors or with the homeless or testing. Everybody's jumping in, doing their part. And then, of course, all the outreach is so critical to our community, particularly our Latino community in multiple formats, media, digital print, social media, public service announcements, and of course, all the work with our farmer research program.
I think that by legal outreach is extremely important, you know. Whether it's a pandemic, I know we've worked with Rico and just all the other services that we have. I think it's extremely important that we do that, you know, and that's working well.
Well, and part of the COVID defense is to educate and outreach to the community. And that's exactly what our county's strength is, is making sure that we have that support system for our community for the needs of the, that we provide.
Thank you, board members. And next, I'll ask, we'll ask Scott to come up and walk us through just a quick summary of the capital projects. We presented this a few months ago, which is just a refresher.
Sure, happy to. I won't go through each one of these, but I did want to call out a few. I was just thinking, when I saw the Noel Drive permanent shelter, that felt like three years ago. It was just January, it was opened. But here we are in a new world here. And the design of Fillmore Fire Station, that was finished, the construction of it, I should say, back in November. Retrow Road and the government center downstairs here in the lower plaza, we finalized as well. On the health and programming unit, we just received some good news on that about a week, two ago. The project stalled up at the state level with the state fire marshal for the past year plus, maybe a year and a half, even though with the due diligence work of the sheriff and their public works engineering services. But in the last month or maybe even less than that, the permit was approved to start construction. So they are kicked off within the last two, three weeks. So we're really excited about that. It's a sixty-one million dollar project out there. Noel Drive we're still working on. We're always looking at opportunities at Noel. We're looking at the second floor as an opportunity to redesign, and we've started a process for that as well. So moving forward, I'll go to Ronald McDonald Family Room. I saw some great pictures of that construction beginning, which is really exciting. And the Ohio Valley, the Ohio Fire Station, we expect to be complete by, I want to say, early next year. I believe it's about six months from now. That project is moving forward. As well as a couple of projects that will be coming to your board. One will be the Regional Golf Course Clubhouse Project, as well as, Fane or two has really been moving quickly too with the help of Public Works Engineering Services. Projects moving forward, a couple of key ones coming up to your board in a couple of weeks is designing construction funding for Cayetacate property we just purchased for the sheriff. We're negotiating with the FBI to inhabit some space there as well. We're excited about that. As well as working on the helipad too at VCMC. That's moving forward too. We're excited about that as well. That concludes my presentation on capital projects. Happy to take questions.
Supervisors, any questions? I don't see any on the Zoom, but I would like to say thank you, especially for the Fillmore Library Improvement. I know how long that was taking just to get going. And also urging our departments to get these things done sooner than later as we have things closed and we need people working. So that would just be my own personal goal for us to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to turn this over to Mr. Bill Foley to present the VCMC's fiscal twenty-one budget.
Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning.
Chair Long, Supervisors, Mr. Powers, Bill Foley, Director of the Healthcare Agency. What I'd like to do is take a minute to brag about our healthcare agency and the Ventura County medical system. Because, you know, in the face of this pandemic, there's really been a lot accomplished this past year due to the hard work. Should I get closer?
We're all about trying to assist you so that the speaking is easier. So you might need to hold the microphone for volume. We will fix this after the break. We want to hear all the bragging. Yes, that's the case. There you go. Thank you.
So there's been a lot accomplished this past year due to the hard work of our great staff at the healthcare agency and our medical system. And I just want to highlight a few of those. First of all, the COVID response, our system, and I give credit to the other hospitals as well. I think the response to the COVID pandemic has really been incredible. We've expanded our surge capacity at VCMC. We've accommodated patients from the skilled nursing facilities in the county. We've increased substantially the quantity of PPE, personal protective equipment. And we've expanded access to testing by developing drive-up testing at multiple clinic sites. At VCMC, we opened Three West to expand access and capacity at the hospital. We, Three West, we have up to twenty beds in Three West. We were awarded almost fifteen million dollars in prop for funding for pediatrics that will allow us to renovate our pediatrics unit. As was mentioned before, we initiated construction of the Ronald McDonald Family Room. We initiated the addiction medicine fellowship program. We, after a lot of deliberation and meeting with other hospitals about the need for expanded behavioral health capacity, we concluded that it was really important for us to expand capacity of both our crisis stabilization unit from four to eight chairs and our IPU from thirty to thirty-six beds, as Mike mentioned earlier. And then we celebrated the ten-year anniversary of our trauma program. Another major accomplishment really focuses on Santa Paula Hospital and the revitalization of Santa Paula Hospital. We activated the Blue Ribbon Advisory Committee, which Supervisor Long is the chair. We resumed the OB with fifteen deliveries per month, and we've really held steady at fifteen to sixteen deliveries per month. And that's really due to a lot of hard work and outreach in the community. We, Dr. Salinas returned to practice OB at Santa Paula Hospital. As was mentioned earlier, we established the county's first inpatient midlife program. We expanded access at Santa Paula Hospital to lab and imaging services, which was identified through our Blue Ribbon Advisory Committee as a challenge. We committed to upgrade CT and mammography services at Santa Paula Hospital. And we've been working with the leadership of Limanera in the Harvest Project on the development of an integrated healthcare campus on the east side of Santa Paula. And there's really been a lot of good work done in terms of planning for that and eventually transitioning Santa Paula Hospital to that healthcare campus. In terms of the awards and recognition, our family medicine residency program for the second year in a row was rated number one in the nation. And we also received awards and recognition for our surgery program through NISQUIP, the National Surgical Quality Improvement Program, and our stroke program. So again, there's a lot accomplished this past year, and we're very proud of the accomplishments and the folks that made that happen. I want to talk about the financial performance because our financial performance was something also that we're very proud of. We had a budgeted net loss for the fiscal year just ending at like nineteen-twenty of close to three million dollars. And we, our preliminary numbers indicate net income of nineteen-point-five million dollars. And, you know, that's a big, a big positive variance. There's several things that contribute to that. And, you know, on the face of it, you know, you might think, well, if we've got fourteen million in provider relief funds through the CARES Act, then that must have contributed to it. But actually, COVID was a wash. If you look at what we received, fourteen million and the lost revenue of nine million and direct expenditures of five million. It's really the non-COVID impact to income, which includes our positive performance of QIP, our quality measures as part of the waiver program. And these are, these are real dollars based on performance and based on a lot of hard work by our clinical staff under the leadership of Dr. Cho, both QIP and PRIME. We received a higher-than-expected DISH payment from the state. And the state is, you know, paying us more regularly now. I think there's a lot of pressure from CMS on the state to make, you know, some of those old payments, including DISH. And then, of course, the Thomas Fire Settlement was another contributor. The county was generous enough to support a new CT scanner at Santa Paula Hospital. And then we had a positive payment on our graduate medical education. So if you factor in, you know, those, you know, those different items, it translates to the positive net income of nineteen and a half million dollars for the year just ending. And of course, that's unaudited, but it has, you know, the, you know, the end-of-year numbers and performance for the medical system.
And just to state, I do know that Santa Paula's Hospital is very grateful for that CT scanner and getting that in there. We're looking forward to that, but also the mammogram machine. I will keep reiterating that. I know our board and our great staff is working on that diligently, but I bring it up every time. Thank you.
So in terms of our fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget, we, the preliminary budget showed a loss of eleven-point-seven million dollars. But we are presenting a budget with a positive net income of seventeen-point-two million dollars. And that's, that's based on several, several things, including an adjustment in FMAP, which is the federal medical assistance percentages that determine our funding, our federal funding. And that, that was a five-point-one million dollar positive increase. As was mentioned earlier, the fifteen million dollar pediatric grant, that was realized as, is being realized as. as operating as income for, for FY '21, or at least the, the majority of that. So that really drops to the, to the bottom line. So we thought it was important to normalize that because that wasn't one fall. And so if, if you normalize our adjusted net income, we're still at a positive $2.2 million net income for FY '20, '21. And again, that's compared to last, this past year's budget where we had a $3 million budgeted loss. So that, those are the, the budget projections for the, the medical system. I did want to go back to something that I missed. If I can go back on this.
Top button? It's either top button or left button.
That way, if you can go back to another one. There. I wanted to mention a couple of things that, for the, the system-wide that, that I overlooked. Obviously, the improved financial performance, but also the leadership. There, I believe that we have really strengthened the leadership of our healthcare system, both at the agency level, at the VCMC, the leadership of the VCMC under Dr. Thankhauser, regulatory care, under Dr. Cho, finance, under Mike Taylor, and revenue cycle and IT. And I think these are just really critical functions that will position us very strongly for the future. We also established the, a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee for the medical system, really following the lead of the, of the county in doing that. And as I mentioned before, we achieved 100% of the quality measures for PRIME and QIP. So I, I overlooked that, on that slide, so I wanted to make sure I highlighted this as well.
I really appreciate you commenting on that. And Supervisor Bennett and I sit on the Oversight Committee, and we see our leadership in action, and we hear all the good initiatives they want to put in place and really fact-finding and understanding where, where we can fix things, if it needs to be fixed, process improvement. I just want to say thank you because we've heard from the nurses on ground floor, on custodians. I mean, people are listening, and I really appreciate them feeling comfortable to talk about ways that they can improve their departments. I have heard, I've heard the comments, and they've, they've been really taken to heart. I know with the Blue Ribbon Committee, in which I'm, I'm chair of, the community outreach and making sure that we're meeting the needs. I want to say thank you to all of them that have really been helping us and guiding us. It's been really a very important step that we have. I know some of us haven't met as much because of COVID-19, but I do know we have our emails and we pick the phone and, and send everything. So I just wanted to say thank you at this opportunity. I know not all the board members are able to be at those meetings, but I, I appreciate this time in which we can educate everyone on the hospital system and all the things that we've been working on. So thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisors, any other further comments for Mr. Foley?
I did, if I can. I know that we're talking mostly healthcare agency, but also part of that is the Behavioral Health Department. And there is a project also that is moving forward, I understand, and that is the Lewis Road property to build some apartments for people with mental illness, as well as emancipated foster youth and people who are facing homelessness. Is that a part of our capital improvement budget? And if so, is it with the HCA or HSA, or where does that fit?
Scott? Thank you, Supervisor. This is Scott Powers again. We started an initial kickoff of that opportunity. We brought in Nick Dietrich, as you're, as you're familiar with, to start that design. So it's in very initial stages, so it's no, it's not in the capital project or in the program yet. We're trying to get to the first step, which would be the initial drawings, and we're doing them with, with Mike and with staff and with your office as well. So that's, that's in the works, so most definitely.
Okay. I, I do know that we applied for a grant, the, was it MHSA perhaps? Grant funds for many mansions for that project. So not sure of the, the timeframe, so maybe it's, it's not in this year, but this coming fiscal year budget, but maybe it'll be in the following one. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you very much, Supervisor Parks. Are there any other further questions from our supervisors? I see none.
I just want to thank Bill and your staff again. Excellent work. We need positive reports, and, and this is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Bill, and certainly echo your comments about your leadership team. Very, very strong. It's exciting to see where you're headed. Well, that'll turn it back to Kay, and she has some updated information on your question on collections.
Yes. The Treasure Tax Collector's Office was able to provide, the, the Treasure Tax Collector's Office was able to provide some information and for the collections for fiscal '20, and they're at 98.6%. So.
Thank you very much, Judge Hints. I love that you watch this and make sure we're hitting everything. That's very impressive.
We just gained a couple of points.
It's a busy day in the county.
All in less than half an hour.
That's right. That's right. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
So going back to our, our, yes. Oh, right here. This is good.
Perfect.
Perfect. So in summary, we have a balanced budget that sustains core county services in health, social services, and safety, and it significantly enhances public health capacity over the long term.
And that's it? Thank you, Kay and Scott. Thank you, board members. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I forgot to mention the first four bullet points. I think we just want to say that, you know, all of this is due to the diligent efforts of management and our employees. And we're also very grateful for your board's direction and support. And as we mentioned earlier, the, the departments have been managing their costs, and they continue to work through the Service Excellence Program as well. So that is all.
I just have to state, we are in a very good place, as are county. There are many that are taking large cuts. I know LA County was what? There are down, we were talking about a negative 10%. We looked at it from 0, 5, 10, what kind of costs associated. I know I personally was fearful for what was going to happen in September and really appreciate the state and federal coming together to support us through this COVID-19, and also our staff really understanding what we need to spend, where we need to spend, and being smart with the dollars that are taxpayers' money. I really do appreciate that because we wouldn't be in the position we are right now with that, that fiscal responsibility taking place. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for your efforts on that. It's pretty powerful.
And also, I think, let's see, allowing us, it's giving us the extra two months really helped us, let's figure out the budget, the state's support, et cetera, so that, so that we kind of knew where we actually needed to be. So, so that was very helpful.
And I would just say thank you too to the, to the fiscal managers in each of the department, the fiscal leadership, because it's a complex year normally. This is not a normal year, and they've really done an amazing job, as well as our auditor controller in partnership with us and our budget analyst. So, and Kay, of course, with her leadership. So thank you for your board's support. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, are there any public comments on this item?
No public comments.
No public comments on this item. Any other supervisors? I want to make sure I open the floor to you all, whether you're in Zoom or at the dais, because I know you're all paying attention. Again, I just want to say thank you from the Board of Supervisors to putting us in a place that provides balance and services for our community. I think it's just huge, and it's very large undertaking, so thank you very much. With that, I'd like to get a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay, it's been motioned by Supervisor Huber and second by Supervisor Zaragoza. With that, if there's any further discussion, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes, and well done.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Thank you. Thank you, Kay. And CEO. End stand.
So yes?
Oh, yes.
And with that, I get a yes?
Chair love.
Yes, thank you so much. Motion is approved unanimously. Really appreciate it. Again, thank you. All right. Next item we have is our 11 o'clock. Or, oh, hold on. Actually, I need to get a, do you want a break? We needed to fix the microphone. Are we still going to do that? Yes, we will take a five-minute recess so that we can figure out this microphone. Thank you very much, and we'll be right back. Hello, thank you for joining us for the Board of Supervisors. We are coming back. We had a technical difficulties with a microphone at the dais. I apologize to anyone who was not able to hear the last presentation as well, but at least I can report out that our budget is good. Our information is on ventura.org, and so if you need to go there for any of the notes, greatly appreciate that. Next up is our time certain number 11, which is a report on the potential impacts of November 2020's ballot initiative to adopt the ordinance to allow commercial cultivation, processing, distribution, and sale of cannabis in the unincorporated area of Ventura County.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello. Well, good afternoon, Chair Long, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Powers. I'm James Portante, Management Analyst with the County Executive Office.
Hello. Sorry, if we could just make sure our phones are off and we're muted so that we can hear. Thank you.
So I'm here to present, they're receiving a file of the impact report for the November initiative on cannabis. So in the interest of time, I'm going to skip over a few slides. As I mentioned, this is an impact report, which your board ordered on July 28th for the potential impacts of the proposed ordinance. In short, we had about, approximately about a month or so to prepare this report. And on this slide you see here is kind of the process and timelines that were involved. One involving a contract with HDL Companies to help prepare the impact report, and then following, meeting with departments, including the Ad Commissioner, County Council, the VA, Planning Sheriff, and the Treasure Tax Collector to assess data needs and information. Then that actual information gathering phase from about August 4th through the, through August 23rd, and then a draft report as of last Monday, and a series of review and revisions for your board's consideration today. With that, I did want to introduce Mark Lovelace of HDL Companies. He's a senior cannabis advisor with the company. As well as on the line, we have Chris Stevens, our former RMA Director, who assisted with the coordination of the information on this effort. And so we also have representatives from our, our Ad Commissioners here today, as well as Captain Slominski from the Sheriff's Office in attendance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark for the report.
All right. Thank you. Mark?
Thank you.
I believe you are online?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We'll have them bring you up.
I can hear him.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you for having me here. And by way of brief introduction, I'm a former county supervisor from Humboldt County, so I've gone on the board there from 2009 through 2016 as we were working on cannabis issues internally, and also established CSAC's Medical Marijuana Working Group that I chaired through 2017. So a little bit of background on HDL. Just, you can see we serve a broad range of cities and counties, and we have a cannabis division that's worked with over 115 agencies to help develop cannabis policy. One point that's not in the slide that I want to emphasize is that HDL only works for public agencies. We have no private sector clients, including in the cannabis industry. We think that that's really important to ensure that we're objective in the work that we do. Next slide, please. So starting with the overview of the initiative, you have the process for doing this analysis was first, what does the initiative say? Then to go through, figure out, so what does that mean? What would it actually cause the county to do? Or what would the impacts be of that? And then what would it look like across the landscape? How much activity, where? These kinds of things. And from that, we can determine the specific impacts that we might see for the county. So initiative, very briefly, is specific to cannabis, commercial, commercial cannabis cultivation and nurseries. They must be in pre-existing greenhouses or indoors. No cultivation outdoors or hoop houses would be allowed. It also, processing and distribution, but only as ancillary uses in support of the cultivation or nursery uses, such as for distribution. It's only, only allows distribution of the company's own product, self-distribution in that way. It doesn't allow manufacturing or retail sales, but it also doesn't prohibit it. And so it wouldn't prohibit the county from considering, you know, if it wanted to allow those uses in the future, it wouldn't be prevented by this initiative. Next slide. The cannabis activities, all of the activities, they're only allowed in the AEE and one, and two zones. It allows for a maximum of 500 cumulative acres of cultivation and 100 cumulative acres of nurseries. As we'll see when we get into the analysis of these figures, they're large, but they're also, they couldn't be realized based on the realities of the existing zoning and the existing greenhouses within the county and on market conditions. We'll discuss that further on. Setbacks from an expansion, can back up a minute, please? 1,200-foot setbacks are double, 600-foot setbacks required by the state, and the list of sensitive uses for the setbacks is expanded greatly to include parks, residential centers, or residential neighborhoods, and a number of other things. So it's, it provides for a broader buffers in those areas. One thing that I do want to point out, though, is the zoning. It only, the, the residential neighborhoods, as defined in this for the buffers there, only uses the county's designation of residential neighborhoods. And so it doesn't apply to neighboring cities. And as we, when we get into land use piece, you'll see that there's some potential conflicts with that.
Madam Chair, I have a question here.
Yes, Supervisor Bennett, please go ahead.
Could you explain how the maximum of 500 cumulative acres is going to be determined? In other words, who, who gets the 500? The first come, first served, or what's the process?
Yes, it is all first come, first served. And so if, if the county, if it were in a situation, which as you'll see, we couldn't be achieved in reality, where there were already 480 acres of cumulative cultivation, and someone came in with a proposal for 50 more acres, they would only be allowed to go forward with 20 of that. So it's, it does, just, it limits it at the point you hit that 500-acre limit.
And what's the definition of actually being entitled? I mean, when, when do you get counted? The day you came in, and then it takes you two months to process? And somebody comes in three weeks after you, but they get processed faster?
The language, the language in that is regarding when the application's received or accepted for processing. So it has to be complete enough to, you know, be accepted across the counter. There are a number of things in the administration of the initiative that would require some clarification if the initiative were approved. And that would be something that the county would have to take up to nail some of these things down. But in general, But in general, it's as of the date that it's, uh, accepted for processing.
The, the, these will end up being, i- if this initiative, especially, will end up being pretty precious, uh, uh, land use permits and, uh, there's gonna, there, there will be a lot of, there will be many legal issues raised, you know, so if it's, if it's on the day your, your application is submitted for process, then, um, can you sit, how long can you sit on it? Uh, all of those kinds of issues. I just want to point that out as we're at this point. Thank you very much.
They're legitimate concerns, yes.
Thank you. Hold on, uh, thank you Supervisor for asking that. Um, and I would just, uh, agree with you on the question of when can you plant? Um, only because with hemp, we've found that when permits were distributed all throughout the year, um, it basically gave a odor, um, all throughout the year, and that was a nuisance to our community, uh, those that spoke here. So just to put that on your radar. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next slide, please. The initiative includes a tax on cannabis businesses, four percent of gross receipts on cultivation, one percent of gross receipts for nurseries. These rates are consistent with Santa Barbara County. Uh, the cultivation tax is a little higher than what we see as kind of the statewide average. But reasonably, since that we, we think that the industry is going to be very, uh, closely tied to the Santa Barbara. It makes sense to connect it and, uh, key it to that rate. Uh, there's no separate or additional tax on processing or distribution. Uh, those activities would be taxed through the core activity of cultivation or nurseries, in this case. And it is a general tax, uh, so it can be used for any general government purpose. Next, please. So, getting into the land use analysis, uh, which is again, how we figure out how much, there's this five hundred acre, one hundred acre figures, but how much of that, uh, realistically, uh, might come to pass becomes a bigger question. So, we started with a lot of, uh, GIS information that was provided by the Resource Management Agency. And it was very helpful, and they were able to provide layers for, uh, provided from the assessor for sites or parcels that have been identified as having greenhouses, meeting the definition, uh, for the assessor of a existing greenhouse. Uh, provided the zoning for the A E M one and M two zones. Uh, they identified setbacks from the sensitive uses. And once we had that information, then we were able to go in and conduct a, a virtual aerial survey using Google Earth, uh, through which we're able to measure the actual area of the existing greenhouses, uh, rather than just a part, the size of parcel. We're able to exclude damaged or destroyed greenhouses that were, require new permitting before they could be usable. Um, and also we're able to exclude hoop houses or high tunnels, uh, because those are not included within the initiative. Next slide, please. This is what that mapping all looks like. Can't really see a whole lot of detail on this one, so we'll move to the next slide, which has close-ups. And on the, on the left, you can see a close-up that shows the zoning, uh, the greenhouse locations identified in blue, and the twelve hundred foot setbacks around the, uh, identified sensitive uses. And as you can see, uh, this is adjacent to the city of Oxnard, and since it doesn't consider cities, uh, doesn't consider zoning other than the county's own zoning for residences, um, there is not a buffer around those areas. Uh, on the right, you can see, this is a Google Earth image, just as an example. You can see the green line going around the greenhouse areas, which is how we measured the area, the size of the greenhouses, square footage, acreage. Can also see, uh, pretty reasonable detail, the differences between hoop houses, shade structures, uh, and other, uh, you know, agricultural buildings other than greenhouses that would not be included.
Madam Chair.
Um, we do have a question, uh, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, the question I have is, uh, have you, uh, uh, or maybe, James, have we worked with the city of Oxnard to get their, their input or feedback on the proposals that we have here?
No, we have not, at this time.
So aren't we?
May I ask?
Have we got to check with the city of Oxnard, too?
Yeah, well, we can, definitely.
You will?
Yes.
And we also have a question from Supervisor Parks.
As I understand it, when it says you would need a buffer from schools, it does not apply to colleges and universities. And I'm wondering, um, for example, uh, in the unincorporated area, there are a couple, there's Cal State University Channel Islands, Thomas Aquinas, but also you have other colleges that may be within that buffer. Have you taken a look at that? And I, I was trying to see where Cal State Channel Islands is on your big map to see if, uh, there's anything within the buffer there.
Um, I couldn't answer that question right offhand with what I have in front of me, uh, right now. But, um, the, I believe that the definition that they used it for, for schools is, uh, a K twelve, um, which is consistent with the state, and so it wouldn't include, uh, higher education.
Okay, and if, if, um, RMA or someone listening in can confirm that your map does, has already excluded those because they aren't, um, something you buffer from, I would like to know.
Yeah, that is, uh, something that we could certainly follow up with.
I think that's the way our GIS works. It just does schools and includes all schools, so you'd have to actually take out those. Thank you.
Uh, one other point that I do want to make while we're looking at this, uh, our land use analysis was only for purposes of providing the impact analysis here. Uh, this should not be relied upon as the final word on which sites would or would not be available or, uh, allowable for these uses. Uh, any determination on that level would almost certainly have to be made on a case-by-case basis as part of the zoning clearance process.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
That answers my question, too.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Uh, next slide, please. So, um, having gone through this analysis, uh, we identified approximately two hundred and twenty total acres of existing greenhouses that meet the requirements of the initiative, and that's far below the six hundred acres, five hundred for cultivation, one hundred for nurseries, uh, that are theoretically allowable by the initiative. So, um, because of that, we don't see any way that, uh, those larger figures of five hundred and a hundred, uh, could ever be realized. But on top of that, when we look statewide, uh, there's only three hundred and forty-seven acres roughly of greenhouse cultivation in the entire state. And in neighboring Santa Barbara County, which is of course one of the, uh, you know, uh, known for having a robust cannabis industry up there, uh, only has sixty-two acres of greenhouse cultivation. So the idea that there might be five hundred acres, um, just from a market-based, based approach, we don't see any, uh, any likelihood of that occurring. Based upon this and other market factors, uh, which I could discuss in greater length, uh, we think that, uh, a good conservative estimate for what might happen in the near future, within the next, uh, first, uh, uh, two to three years, might be perhaps four cultivators each averaging around sixty thousand square feet of cultivation, under two acres of greenhouse. So those are the figures that we utilize for, uh, the rest of this analysis in terms of the impacts. And, uh, in particular, the, uh, fiscal impacts from this. Next slide. And this just shows, uh, the acreage for the different kinds of cultivation in neighboring counties and across the state. And, uh, you can see in Santa Barbara County, uh, we estimate there's five hundred and eighty-nine acres of outdoor cultivation, but that would be, uh, prohibited by this initiative. Uh, excuse me, those are the number of permits, not the, uh, not the acreage. The total acreage, uh, in Santa Barbara would be a hundred and seventy-three acres, and that includes those five hundred and eighty-nine outdoor licenses. And the total acreage, uh, for the entire county there for greenhouse would be sixty-seven acres. Uh, again, across all of California, there's only seven hundred and eighty-eight acres of cannabis cultivation of all types, uh, licensed in California. Uh, so again, idea that the county could ever see anything close to six hundred acres of cultivation is just not realistic from a market-based approach. The market's just not that big.
Mark, can I ask a question? This is Supervisor Long. Um, when you state indoor, is that brick and mortar, or is that hoops? What, what is classified as indoor?
Okay, uh, that's, uh, a good point, and I'm glad you raised that, because, uh, this is based on state license types. And, uh, the state license types are entirely, uh, referred to the lighting that's used. Outdoor means you use nothing but natural light. You never apply any artificial light, any supplemental lighting to help with the growing cycle. Uh, indoor means you use only artificial light. There's no natural light coming in through skylights or a glass roof or anything of that sort. Uh, greenhouse, um, what we call greenhouse here is actually, uh, referred to by the state as mixed light. And that's anything that's not a hundred percent one or the other. So if they have, uh, used any supplemental lighting, uh, that would qualify as mixed light use, uh, even if it is in a, otherwise a totally transparent greenhouse. It also, uh, mixed light also includes, uh, artificial dark. So if they're tarping, you know, to create additional hours of darkness to, you know, help kind of fool the plants into believing, you know, the passage of days, uh, is one way to look at that. Uh, that also would fall into the category of mixed light. The initiative, uh, doesn't speak directly to the license type. It speaks only to the structure within which it would occur, which is, uh, a greenhouse. But we anticipate that that would be virtually a hundred percent, uh, uh, mixed light. Uh, it does also allow some indoor structures, um, so it's possible that there could be some small amount of indoor cultivation, uh, in the county, too. But we think the, uh, the greatest interest by far would be for the, the, uh, mixed light cultivation in greenhouses.
Thank you for asking that.
So having, uh, looked at the book or analysis, we can then go through and look at some of the, uh, impacts. Uh, the initiative does allow the county to recover all reasonable costs directly related to the issuance of the license, which is, again, generally as would be allowed in, uh, any other case. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't determine an amount of those costs. It doesn't set a maximum cost that the county can recover. It doesn't prevent the county from assessing any other fees for associated regular activities. As we know, you know, for something like this, there's a lot more other than just the primary land use entitlement and the, uh, business license. It would, uh, also, any business would likely also have things such as hazardous materials handling, uh, fees. Uh, there may be, you know, a lot of other, uh, kinds of, of programs and regulated activities that would also be required to be permitted and would require their own fees. Uh, it also doesn't limit the ability of any other agencies, uh, outside of the county to exercise their regulatory authority or charge fees as appropriate. Next slide. The fiscal impacts, uh, continuing with it on the tax revenue side. Given what we estimated of, uh, four greenhouses with sixty thousand, uh, square feet of cultivation each, we estimate approximately two point eight eight million dollars in annual tax revenue from cultivation. Imagining, uh, perhaps two, uh, smaller nursery operations in support of those, uh, we would estimate forty thousand dollars annually from those. For a total of around two point nine million dollars in annual cannabis tax revenue for the county. Next. Public safety impacts. First, I want to note that this section was, uh, provided by the Ventura County Sheriff's Office. It, the initiative, uh, there's no reason to believe that this initiative would, uh, deter illegal cultivation by drug trafficking organizations in the Los Padres National Forest. These are really two completely separate things. A drug trafficking organization is primarily, uh, a trafficking organization. And they do not have, the fact that the product happens through cannabis has absolutely no bearing on their interest in, you're going legal. It just doesn't happen. Uh, they will can remain illegal, um, and, uh, we just don't see any transition happening there. Uh, we also don't believe there's, there's no mechanism by which it would reduce unlicensed black market sales, as there's no retail component here. Uh, some of the security requirements, perimeter security systems, lighting, twenty-four hour video monitoring, some of these exceed the state requirements. Uh, and those could be helpful both in deterring crime and also perhaps in helping to investigate crime. Uh, legal cannabis businesses, uh, can be attractive to crime, uh, largely because of, you know, it's a very portable product, uh, easy to transport, uh, and there's, of course, uh, it's still a cash-rich industry because of, uh, limitations or prohibitions on the ability to, uh, put that money into conventional banking. Uh, so because of that, there's an attractiveness where even if the businesses themselves are not involved in crime, they could be subject to crime. Uh, the Sheriff's Office also believes that licensed cannabis cultivations, cultivators may be linked to criminal black market operations, that some of the product being grown by them, uh, may be moved into the illicit market. Or, uh, conversely, that some product that originates in illegal grows could be kind of laundered through the operation and moved into the legal market. And, uh, understand that we have someone from the Sheriff's Office who I, uh, imagine may want to speak to this, uh, following this presentation. Um, moving on to the next slide. Environmental impacts. Uh, because this initiative would not result in any changes to zoning, uh, or in any new greenhouse construction, it all has to be, uh, pre-existing. Uh, we don't see any, uh, land use impacts from that side. The initiative requires best available odor control technology, and that has to be continuously operated. Uh, it doesn't really define that, um, so it gives the county a fair bit of latitude in how it would, um, require and enforce that. But ultimately, there's no requirement that those odors be fully eliminated. Uh, the only, uh, limitation on that would be with nurseries, where it does say that nurseries, um, can only have, uh, non-flowering, you know, non-odor-producing, uh, starts, which is kind of the nature of, uh, uh, the young nursery plants. Uh, applicants have to demonstrate at least twenty-five percent reduction in anticipated energy use, which could also be met by enrollment in a clean power program. We estimate the total energy demand of one point eight megawatts. The actual consumption would depend on the lighting regimen that's being used at different, part, different stages in the growth cycle and different times of the year. Uh, total water consumption, we estimated eighteen million gallons per year. And regarding pesticides and herbicides, cannabis cultivation, uh, because pesticides and herbicides are, uh, regulated at the federal level, uh, their application, there's no allowance for using any of them on, uh, cannabis. And so cannabis ends up being essentially, uh, organic. However, organic is also a federal designation, so they can't use that either. There is kind of a inverse, uh, concern about herbicides and pesticides, which is that because cannabis has to be, uh, strictly tested for, uh, contaminants, that there's a greater concern of cannabis, uh, being, uh, contaminated by, uh, neighboring, uh, conventional agriculture from herbicides or pesticides from those uses. Uh, that's the greater concern here.
This is Bob Huber. I have a question.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Yes, this is a quick question. Was there an analysis concerning the smell of these plants growing inside of greenhouses and still being a nuisance to people that live near, in nearby homes?
There is a lot of technology, uh, going into odor control. But, uh, this is an industry that's only been legal for, uh, we have about three years now. And so that technology is still in development. And so when we get to that phrase, best available odor control technology, we can imagine that'll continue to approve, improve. One of the reasons for, uh, being in greenhouses as opposed in not allowing hoop houses, hoop houses commonly, the sides will be opened up to allow cross ventilation. Greenhouses remain completely closed, so that, uh, there's a much greater ability to control, uh, odors, to provide filtering. Uh, there is a lot that can be done, um, but I would not, uh, want to suggest that, uh, the county shouldn't have an expectation that will come down to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, housing impacts, uh, again, no zoning changes, uh, so there'd be no, we don't see any significant, uh, significant impacts to the supply of housing. Uh, because of, uh, the county has a policy regarding allowing, uh, one unit farm- because of the county has a policy regarding allowing one unit farmworker housing for every hundred thousand square feet of greenhouse in use. So it could conceivably result in an increase of four units of farmworker housing. We think it also could have an indirect impact on housing desirability and property values in some locations due to those odor issues. But what those impacts might be is really impossible to quantify. Next. Infrastructure impacts. Again, no new construction, so we don't, we think it's unlikely to result in any new road construction, extension of utilities, sewer drainage issues, or infrastructure impacts of those types could result in a minor increase in traffic, including heavy truck traffic on county roads that serve the locations. And by utilizing otherwise vacant greenhouse space would likely result in a net increase in energy usage. These impacts, we're assuming again, as that says, that it's utilizing otherwise vacant greenhouse infrastructure. So to that degree, any of these impacts would be additive to what currently exists. To the degree there's replacing other activities that might otherwise happen there, they would very likely be, the impacts would be greatly reduced or even just in even exchange. Next. Labor and employment impacts. Looking at the figures that we're able to get regarding averages for greenhouse cultivation, we're expecting that, on average, that we'd see seven full-time positions and five part-time workers per operation, including a greenhouse manager, which is generally very well-paid, very professional job because, you know, there's a lot riding on their management. Total, we would estimate seventy-two direct jobs from cultivation and a total payroll of around three million dollars per year. There may be a few additional jobs regarding distribution in this, but that would depend upon exactly the nature of how each operation is trying to self-distribute the product. We think that'd be a minor addition to this. Next. Actually, before we leave that one, I did want to point out one other thing. Cannabis jobs, including cultivation, are not considered agricultural jobs for purposes of law. And so they are required to be subject to a forty-hour work week, including overtime and breaks and all other requirements of regular employment.
What are they classified at, Mark?
They just don't, they don't meet the definition of an agricultural farmworker job. And so they, the job would depend, you know, the classification, I'm not sure how to answer that question, other than that they're subject to a regular forty-hour work week that any time over that has to be paid as overtime, that they have to be allowed the regular breaks, you know, every fifteen minutes, every two hours and a half hour lunch break. All of the things of a regular employee of any other type of business. Next. Administrative impacts. This is an area that I believe the county may want to spend a little time discussing because it's, the initiative is a little light on exactly how the program would be administered. It doesn't designate a single lead agency. Different functions are assigned to different departments. The county executive offices, office would administer the business license program. The taxes would be collected by the county treasurer tax collector. The zoning clearance determinations would be made by the planning director. They would be ministerial, specifies, no hearing or appeal allowed on those. And it also doesn't limit the ability of other agencies to exercise the regulatory authority or charge fees, as we discussed previously. It does allow amendments, provided that they do not result in an increase in the amount of tax or broaden the scope of the tax. And so because that language is pretty broad, it appears to allow the county, you know, broad latitude in making changes, you know, to how it administers the program as long as it doesn't result in an increase like that. There are a number of counties that have reassigned certain tasks, including tax collection. Again, because of the cash-rich nature of the industry, there can be concerns with how that's done. And there are various options out there. One of the key concerns here, though, is that the county wouldn't have, should this initiative pass in November, the county wouldn't have a lot of time to get these administrative processes in place because it requires that the county would have to begin accepting applications both for zoning clearances and for business licenses as of January first. So in most cases, it does kind of suggest that the applicant should have the zoning clearance in hand before they submit for the business license. And so that would push things a little further back there. But it does also allow that they can request dual processing at the same time. And I believe, move to the next slide. Yes, that is the end of the presentation. And I'm certainly open to answering any questions that you may have.
Supervisor, Supervisor Parks, do you have a question?
I have more than one, actually.
Great.
Thank you. Am I correct that it was Howley Nursery that sponsored this? And I know they have a lot of greenhouses not too far from Cal State China Island, see there, but are you aware of that?
I did try to contact the backers of the initiative. I had, you know, I had contact information for three different parties and didn't hear from any of them as I was putting this together. But that's not a surprise. What we've seen in a number of other places around California that in the past have had a robust cut flower industry, that industry was pretty much decimated by some federal policy in the past that was trying to work against the cocaine industry in Central America by providing benefits to cut flowers from Central and South America. And so a lot of places ended up with vacant greenhouse infrastructure. And we've seen it's pretty common that they're looking at this as a possible opportunity to make use of that infrastructure. Seen that in Monterey and Half Moon Bay and a number of other places that we've worked with.
Also, do you know why they are asking for six hundred acres of greenhouses and warehouses in this initiative when, for example, Santa Barbara's only sixty-two acres? That six hundred acres is concerning. And while your analysis is saying, well, they'll never go to six hundred, I don't know if that's the case or not. If there are some warehouses that you may not have considered or other buildings that could be retrofitted. But I just, it does seem like a tremendous amount. And I appreciate your report, too. I mean, you point out that the largest consumers of marijuana in the state of California is right over the hill in Los Angeles. So it would be very convenient in that sense, correct?
Yeah, the county would be in a good position as far as the industry goes because it has a large market nearby. It has a, and by the, I should be saying the industry that may should be attracted to this would be in a good location here because of its access to a large market, because there's a lot of supportive industries there in terms of other manufacturers and distributors and retailers and all the other things. You know, as with any other industry, no business exists by itself. It depends upon a large network of supporting businesses make it work. And so that location would be, you know, important here.
And also with the federal government not allowing the transport across state lines and also that is a concern, just to go to that, why are they asking for six hundred acres? When, like I said, Santa Barbara sixty-two, it's a huge amount. So just because I have several questions, I'll move on to, you talked about lighting and, yes, in warehouses and inside buildings, they're not allowed to have what I would call light pollution. But that's not the case with greenhouses, is that correct?
Greenhouses, I did spend some time looking through the county's zoning code. And I believe that I, I would ask Chris perhaps to chime in, but I believe that there were limitations on lighting for greenhouses.
So that, but specifically, I'm just looking at the initiative, it doesn't call for any requirements, correct?
It didn't provide any of its own. But doing so, it also doesn't supersede existing regulations that the county has in place.
And also, in your report, it mentioned that it was not clear what pre-existing buildings are, or pre-existing greenhouses. And so that needs to be ironed out. And for example, I believe your report said you just looked at greenhouses that had foundations specific to the assessor's office, is that accurate?
Yes and no. The initiative says pre-existing permanent greenhouses. Both of those terms are used in there. Unfortunately, neither pre-existing nor permanent is defined within the initiative. So pre-existing could be interpreted in a couple of different ways. For purposes of this initiative, we assumed that it meant as of day of adoption. However, it also, in terms of setbacks from some of the sensitive uses, it says as of, I think it's March fourth, twenty twenty, existing as of March fourth. So that's another date that appears in here for pre-existing, but it's not speaking specifically of pre-existing greenhouses in that case. Permanent, meaning something that requires a foundation and permitting in that way. That definitely is a key part of, you know, specifying greenhouses instead of hoop houses, things that can't just be picked up and moved readily from one location to another.
My question, though, specifically was, because I do know greenhouses that don't have foundations. You know, they might have gravel or something. And so my question was, when you looked at greenhouses, you eliminated some. Were you only looking at greenhouses that have foundations?
The, we had a number of different pieces of information to work with. And again, we're doing this as, you know, just a broad analysis for purpose of impacts. As I, you know, the caveat I gave earlier that this should not be relied upon as, you know, in any way to indicate, you know, which locations would or would not be usable. That'd have to be done on a case-by-case basis. But through the assessor's office provided what they determined as being greenhouses by the, by their own definition there. And someone from the assessor's office perhaps might be able to speak a little more, a little more detail of exactly what determinations they made. But in our virtual aerial survey, we looked at all of those locations and then looked further field at things that haven't been identified by the assessor that were still in the unincorporated area and found a number of additional sites. There was a lot of sites that were identified by the assessor where it may be a very, very large parcel, maybe, you know, a hundred acres with, you know, nearly a hundred acres of covered area. But going through and looking at that, there'd be, you know, only a small portion of that that appears to be permanent greenhouse. There may also be things that were abandoned or destroyed sites where you can see a foundation that previously existed, but it would not be able to be reused without new permitting, which would consider it as new construction. So we tried as best as we could without doing, you know, a true, on the, you know, ground truthing kind of visit.
And I understand too, I mean, if, we got this with very short time. As a matter of fact, we had preferred to have this analysis prior to our decision of whether we have to put it on the ballot or not. But I appreciate the fact that you had a short period of time. I think you did a good analysis. Looking at maps was really helpful. And so some things that I'm thinking about with this because I feel like there are potential loopholes and some things that are just not defined. And I'm thinking that our board of supervisors may want to step forward between now and January when it will become effective to ensure that we can close some of those loopholes. Some of the things like you had mentioned in your report about what defines pre-existing, what is the definition of that? We've heard supervisors also talking about the planting season. Can we control that perhaps with a subsequent ordinance? Also, as Supervisor Bennett mentioned, how long someone can sit on a permit? I wonder also about establishing violations. At what point, if they violate the law enough, would they be shut down? Can we require that they use only organic growing methods? So we don't have the kind of pollution, pesticide pollutions. Also, the effects on recycled, on water and the ability to use recycled water. And even in electricity, you know, I know some agencies out there are requiring that they use a hundred percent green energy or that they have solar. So there are things that I would like to look at to see if we can address what I see as a potential loopholes and not really respecting sufficiently the concerns of our residents particularly. We still have a lot of residents that are a lot closer than the half mile that we're considering for hemp, you know, that are in this twelve hundred feet setback that's being considered for cannabis. So I think we do need to step up here. But I know that the basis of this study is so that the voters know what the impacts can be if they vote for it. But I think as a board member, we have to be conservative and think about, if it gets approved, we need to have something there in place and that. And I'll stop there because I know other board members have some comments. But I would like to look at that and also lighting, you know, since there are lather, that spill over lighting, as I understand from greenhouses, like you see with Howling today, that this might be something that we want to look at and make sure that's tied in our county ordinances. Thank you for the report and thank you for indulging me, board.
Supervisor Zerakosa. Can, Bob, I'll be right, I'll get you in just a second, Supervisor Huber. Supervisor Zerakosa.
The concern that I have, and probably addressed earlier, is that that you work closely with the cities, you know, and the zoning. I think it's extremely important. Make sure that they have the ability to share their concerns. Because I don't want to go through that hemp issue again where, you know, we have so many feet and et cetera, et cetera, and the smell and so forth. But I think it's important, I think I saw in your map that some of the, the houses are over or the houses are over on Victoria and Gonzalez, as I saw quite a few there. So that's pretty close to some of those homes, sort of the golf course. So I think that's important that we, you know, we make sure that we contact the cities and work with them and also the residents, which I think is extremely important.
Thank you, Supervisor Zerakosa. Supervisor Huber, please go ahead.
I, just a couple of things, a couple of questions. What can the county do if a cannabis farm becomes a nuisance with the smell from the crop? That's the first question.
Mark, do you have an answer for that one?
Yeah, nuisance, as defined elsewhere in the county code, the county would continue to have the ability to enforce against any nuisance as it would if it were any other industry or business. And so odor issues, to the degree that they become a nuisance, the county could, you know, enforce against that consistent with its existing enforcement authority. Again, though, the fact that it smells and smells like cannabis may or may not be by itself a cause for taking enforcement action. It would have to be, this is certainly something that should be discussed with council. But it generally would have to be something that, it couldn't be singled out because it smells like cannabis instead of smelling like something, some other strong smelling thing. It would have to be equal, equal enforcement. I don't know if that answers the question. I don't know if that answers the question.
Yeah, I had, well, I had a second, uh, part to that. And we add to the impact report that major does not provide assurance that the odor from the cannabis farm will not be a nuisance to nearby homes.
Yeah, and I did try to speak to that and certainly, uh, address that in the presentation here, that there's no requirement that the odor be reduced to zero. Uh, and so, uh, the previous comment I was just making is that, uh, I know from my previous experience up here in Humboldt County, that we would often have people that would complain about, uh, being able to smell the cannabis, period. Uh, when there may be other businesses nearby that also make odors that some people may consider offensive. And so, uh, the definition of nuisance, is, it's a difficult one when you get to odor, you know, the olfactory sense is one that we have a difficult time quantifying. Uh, there is a tool that's being utilized by a lot of, uh, uh, jurisdictions now called a nasal ranger, and it's, uh, a tool that is able to determine, how much the odor, uh, comes down, um, by increasing distance. Uh, I've never operated this or, you know, been trained on it myself. Uh, others within HDL have, uh, experience with it. But it is a way to actually provide a measurable, uh, marker for odor reduction, to be able to say that, you know, if it smells this bad, you know, ten feet outside the greenhouse, um, it has to smell half that bad, you know, fifty feet outside or a hundred feet or whatever, you know, to be reduced so that you're able to have some sort of metric for how much they have to be able to control that odor before we say this is what qualifies as a nuisance, this is what doesn't. Um, so there are some tools out there. Uh, again, the measure requires, uh, best practices. Whatever those best practices may be, uh, can be applied in this case. Uh, but again, it doesn't provide a benchmark of saying that it has to be reduced to zero.
Thank you for the feedback. I appreciate that. I want to thank staff for incorporating the changes recommended by our Sheriff, uh, AU. Since he's the one elected by Ventura County residents to maintain public safety, it's important we understand the impact this initiative will have on our crime. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Supervisors, any other questions? Mark, I had a question for you. I have, uh, Judge Hints in the audience. And we talk about, uh, finances a lot. And so for this type of funding, is it a cash-only, uh, business? How does, how do we collect when federally it's not in, um, how, how do, how do we work money-wise?
Uh, it's not cash only, but it's still very much cash-heavy. Um, the, uh, the law doesn't, uh, prohibit, uh, banking institutions from, uh, taking in, uh, money from cannabis businesses. However, uh, if it turned out that any of that is, is from a illegal, um, business or actually is from criminal enterprise, uh, that's where the concern comes in. And so it becomes a matter of practice that most, uh, financial institutions just don't want to touch it because there's too much liability and all the assurances in the world that you're totally legal, uh, you know, aren't adequate protection for them. So there are some institutions, you know, here and there, there's some, uh, uh, some credit unions that have, uh, developed to try to find workarounds, uh, to help with this. And there's a number of different, uh, tools that some, uh, uh, cannabis businesses have been utilizing for being able to, uh, conduct transactions other than in cash. But regardless, it still is a very much, uh, cash-heavy, uh, industry. We have worked with a couple of jurisdictions on, uh, developing, um, pilot programs where the cash would be, uh, both for, for fee, permitting fees for taxes and even the, the, uh, business's own, uh, uh, revenues, you know, going to their own bank, would all be, uh, conducted via, uh, uh, an armored car service as a part of their, uh, permitting, um, costs. Uh, we haven't actually implemented any of those programs, but we've been exploring that with, uh, in consultation with a company called Hard Car that provides specific armored car services for cannabis businesses. And there are a lot of different, uh, tools out there that different jurisdictions, you know, have come up with for, uh, handling those volumes of cash. The permitting end oftentimes, you know, it'll, and for tax collection, uh, sometimes they'll just do it that, uh, it's only done on a, uh, uh, appointment basis so that they, you know, know when they're going to have a large amount of cash coming in the door. Uh, or that it's only done on a certain day of the week so that they can have, you know, law enforcement, uh, present, uh, or other things of that sort. But, so there's a lot of, you know, tools that are being utilized, but, uh, there still is just a lot of cash in this industry until banking laws change. That's going to continue to be a, a problem.
Thank you. Are there any further questions in regards to, uh, the potential impact for the November twentieth, uh, ballot? I believe this is a receive and file. Uh, and so we do have some, go ahead.
I have a question of county council.
Yes.
And that, that relates to, um, concerns of impacts that we could avoid if we had a companion measure, for example. Um, do we have the authority to do something like that or does this initiative restrict us?
You are restricted, but not by the initiative itself. Uh, the law is that if, uh, ordinance is adopted by initiative, it can only be repealed or amended in a way that deletes one of the original provisions by another initiative. So the board can't just override, uh, an initiative proposition that's approved by the voters. It would have to be amended by another initiative approved. But now the board could put an amendment on the ballot in the future, but it would have to be approved by a vote, assuming, uh, Measure O passes.
I, I'm thinking about, um, for example, we can change our ordinances and this marijuana-growing cannabis-growing would be affected by the change in our ordinances. Uh, for example, if we tightened up our greenhouse ordinance, that you can't have light spillage as an example of, of one. And, and there, I, I can see many, or for example, with the, with hemp and just, just as with hemp, we say any marijuana growing in our county has to be organic. You know, those kinds of things that it doesn't, um, it, it's where this initiative is silent. You know, because they don't say whether it has to be organic or not, but we could establish some requirements. Um, would we have that leeway?
Well, I mean, as I stated, the general rule is such an ordinance would have to be put to the voters for approval. Um, if you're in a situation where you think the current ordinance is silent, um, I think you still have to consider whether the new ordinance would contradict, uh, a right that, um, is embedded in the original, original ordinance. Organic? It'd be hard to judge. I, I would suspect there are strong arguments on the other side that that would be inconsistent with the current ordinance because it didn't require anything to be done organically. It, it does require a site plan and other things. So the fact that silent on something doesn't, uh, end the analysis. The basic rule is a future ordinance that would reduce the rights and contravene the privileges that are, would be provided by Measure O can only be approved by a vote of the people.
Okay, we do have, yeah, we do have three public comments on this item. It's more not done yet. Uh, we have two minutes for each. We have, um, our first one is on video. Uh, Clerk of the Board, you want to do the announcement because I think you can see better than I.
Jared Ficker.
So Jared, if you're on Zoom, you need to, uh, unmute your phone and video so we can see you.
Two minutes?
And there's two minutes. Is he on? We've had an issue at public comments before.
They're doing that from upstairs.
Okay. Thank you. I T. I just see standby.
There we go.
Okay, Jared. Hello.
There we go. Um, hey, Chair Long and members of the board, my name is Jared Ficker. I'm speaking on behalf of the Ventura County Citizens for Responsible Cannabis. Uh, my comments are brief today. Uh, generally, we concur with the analysis by your third-party consultant, HDL. Um, HDL's report did not identify any significant impacts associated with the cannabis initiative, um, Measure O, which is scheduled for the November twenty twenty ballot. Um, in drafting the measure, we took seriously the county's ghost blow approach, um, and are proposing only a very limited commercial cannabis program, um, for cultivation in existing infrastructure in the county. As noted in the report, the measure does not allow any outdoor cultivation, nor does it allow retail sales or manufacturing in the county. Um, finally, the measure includes the largest sensitive receptor setbacks in the state, which includes setbacks from residential areas. Um, thank you for your consideration and please vote this November. Um, real briefly, just, uh, to Supervisor Park's comments, um, there is actually some requirements in there for, um, blackout shading, um, to reduce lighting impacts. Um, it's something kind of embedded in, um, cannabis cultivation in greenhouses anyway. Um, so I think that would be a net improvement over some of the lighting that you see from existing greenhouses. And, um, at some point in the future, as this goes to implementation, should it actually pass, um, we'd be happy to get into some of the details, um, of, uh, addressing, you know, anything, um, implementation measures or other things, because I think the, the actual measure is quite comprehensive in addressing some of the concerns that I heard today. Um, thank you again and, uh, please vote this November.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is a phone.
Yes, it's Michael Adams.
We do have an interpreter if needed, uh, but Michael Adams, can you hear us? You have two minutes. Is he on? Michael Adams, can you hear us? Hello, anyone? I T. I feel like I'm speaking to the.
Is that Espanol? Maybe it says interpreter required. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Maybe. No?
Okay, we'll get back to that one. Um, how about, uh, we have one email from Jim Glimmer? Glimmer? Gilmer? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Long, Supervisors and CEO Powers. Email reads, "Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. I represent a network of local residents from Oxford and Portway, ME who strongly support the approval of this ordinance with recommendation that the county also include a social equity provision in this ordinance that ensures a minimum number of licenses be awarded to qualified local residents and that the incentives be given to veterans and people from communities of color. The cannabis industry is extremely underrepresented in ownership, management and operations by people of color and women. We are in a critical time of racial and social equity awareness and action so today, as you, as our elected leaders, can do what is right and provide the needed social equity in this new industry in our county. Thank you all. Jim Gilmer, community advocate, Oxford, California."
Thank you very much. And I understand that the caller was on cue, but we're not responding. So that's all of the public comments for this item. Are there any more comments? Oh, there's one more public comment from, um, Judge Hints. If he's gonna, because he's in staff, he's in our dais meeting room, so I will allow you, since you're not just public, to come to the podium.
I am Stephen Hints, Ventura County's treasurer, tax collector. I'll be very brief. Answering your question about the cash handling, uh, the two million dollars of expected payments is a drop in the bucket. And whoever handles those payments, it will not be an administrative hardship. If it were my office, none whatsoever. If it was the auditor controller, I don't know, but that's a very small problem. Real problem, uh, with the report, uh, I was told that my comments in favor, arguments in favor of my position, uh, are to be deleted from the report. And that's fine because I don't want it to be too argumentative and subject to any lawsuit. And so county council's determination on that point is fine with me. But the report as it stands now goes on at some length rebutting the position that I was not allowed to argue in favor of. So it seems to me that if my comments, uh, arguing the illegality of the whole thing are stricken because they're too argumentative, so also should be the arguments that rebut my position. Finally, there's one whole paragraph at the bottom that points out that there are twelve hundred government agencies that, uh, have never been, had their property seized as a result of this, and that's true. The Titanic was unsinkable. The Japanese Navy could never attack Pearl Harbor. Tom Dewey was elected president in nineteen forty-eight. A lot of things that we are, were certain of, positive about, event this proved. No wildfire was ever going to burn my house down. These are things we knew. And yet, you're willing, and the public will be willing or not, to risk a three billion dollar investment pool and the entire county general fund on a letter from a junior assistant U.S. Attorney General promising that there will be no prosecution. I would not make that bet. And I think that the county's report should suggest that that's a bad bet. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Judge Hints. Okay, that concludes the public comments for this item, for the receive and file. And, um, if I can get a motion from a supervisor in a second to receive and file this information.
I'd be glad to make the motion. And I, I, I would just comment that it may sound good to some people unless your house is near one of these places. And we have experienced, just with the hemp and talking about doing a half-mile buffer. Um, I think we're going to have a lot of discomfort from residents, from businesses located near these because there really isn't the technology. While it might be the best, it doesn't, uh, sufficiently get rid of the odor. And we're going to hear a lot of concerns about that. And I agree, the sheriff has got some great points too, that the black market, um, can also benefit from just the additional crops. And it is way overblown to talk about six hundred acres here in Ventura County. Um, as Judge Hints says, that it, um, it could happen, um, that we could have problems taking tax revenue from an ill, a federally illegal, uh, product. We could also end up with a lot more, um, growing than, and indoor growing than ever anticipated in this study. It gives me a lot of concerns, um, but I, I hope people will think of those who may be impacted when they're out there voting. And, um, I would also ask that our, that we look a little more thoroughly as to what we may be able to do to reduce some of the impacts, um, with our ordinances. Uh, though county council's initial reaction is we can't, I think there may be some things that we can do as long as we're not just specific to, uh, this initiative. With all that said, um, I make the motion to receive and file, and thank you very much for the report.
Sure. Supervisor Bennett, second.
Thank you very much. It's been first by Supervisor Parks and second by Supervisor Bennett. Um, I agree with, it's the vote of the people and it's extremely important. We heard, uh, the propelling issues for it. Um, we've also had this boardroom full of hemp, uh, complaints and so forth of this, this smell and so forth. Um, so there are great concerns. Uh, just because we're approving this on the board doesn't mean each individual supports or doesn't support. We have not voted on that. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear to people that were watching right now. Supervisor Zaragoza, did you have a question?
Madam Chair, I, this is going to be up to the voters, but my concern, again, to James and inner staff is that we work for the, especially the city of Oxnard, because right there on Gonzalez and Victoria, the prevailing west winds blow right into those, into all those homes. And remember the hemp issue, you know, and the concerns that people had. So I think it's extremely important that the zoning is done properly and then make sure that we contact the city officials, any other city officials or other cities anyway. So I, so that's my, I'm going to vote for it because it's up to the, to the voters, too. That's a potential impact, you know.
There's a lot of potential with that, agreeing, or in discussions. So I appreciate that. Appreciate staff's work. And Mark, thank you very much for the in-depth information. Appreciate that as well. So it's been first and second. We will now take a roll call.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, so that motion is unanimous for the receive and file of information on this item.
Thank James, sorry, I didn't remember. Thank James for putting this together in a very short, short time with HDL and Chris Stevens as well, and our chair. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. More to come. Elections are mean more and more every single day, that's for sure. Some people think they shouldn't, shouldn't vote. I'm like, what? Too much going on here. It's too important not to vote. Okay, so moving on to our next item, which is 33. Recommendation of Supervisor Bennett to appoint Elizabeth R. Stone to the B. Harrell Hill Advisory Board. Supervisor Bennett, I will pass this on to you.
Thank you very much. The letter speaks for itself. I think this is a very good addition to the mental health board. Move the recommended action.
I'll second that, too, and I agree.
It has been first by Supervisor Bennett and second by Supervisor Parks. I appreciate the appointment of Ms. Stone, and she lives in Port Winyimi and is going to represent us very well. So I just wanted to say thank you and a little props to my own district, Port Winyimi. Okay, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, and that is unanimous. Okay, moving on. If people are following up, items 34 and 35 will be heard during our 1 o'clock time certin, which is 39. I would, I would like to just get the correspondence agenda complete. So we have a motion for receiving the correspondence from 40 to 43, which is really sad for my own personal, just because it's all these unemployment issues for our community. My heart goes out to all those that are losing their jobs right now. So with that, a motion to receive the correspondence.
So move.
So it's been motioned by Supervisor Zaragoza and second by Supervisor Huber. Okay, got to get my voices correct. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, so that motion is approved. We also have our... Yes.
Supervisor Bennett, I know, I know we have board comments, and we may be postponing those. I just wanted to ask the board's indulgence to, I have no other board comments except my adjourned memory, and I want to call out Tony Skinner. It was a big loss for our county to lose Tony Skinner. He played a huge role in the labor movement here in Ventura County. And I think one of the most incredible things was being the president and the founder of the ACES program, the job training program there. Anyway, really sorry to have lost Tony and wanted to make sure we got that properly recognized here. And that's a board's adjourned memory. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Bennett. I wasn't going to miss the board comments, but I think at this point, we might, I think you've just opened it up. That was a great loss for our community. And with that, I will go with Supervisor Zaragoza. We'll just finish up the public comments now before we go to go ahead and Supervisor Zaragoza.
I'll go ahead and share some information, too. And, and again, you know, I, as Supervisor Bennett stated, too, I also would like to share that there was really my condolences to the Skinner family from the 5th District, and in fact, the entire county, I'm sure. And I know that he really was a champion for union members and the apprenticeship program for a lot of youth. And I'm not going to share as much as, because I know that Supervisor Bennett mentioned, but in the article, I just want to share that one of the elected officials mentioned in the, in the press, and I want to kind of reiterate and share that information that was shared. And his quote, this is, "Tony committed his whole life to the uplift of the community, whether it's for the union brothers and sisters or high school kids. He made his life a mission to build the middle class, and Tony will be missed but not forgotten." End of quote. I just want to share that, but I think that was very appropriate. And also, I have adjourned a memory of the folks that were, that were submitted to the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Supervisor Huber.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to call out one individual on my adjournment list. We recently had the very unexpected loss of former Simi Valley Mayor Greg Stratton. Greg cared about his family, and he also cared so deeply for Simi Valley. He served as a member of the City Council before being elected mayor. He also served on the Simi Valley Unified School District Board of Trustees, and most recently was a member of the El Rancho Cemetery District Board of Directors. He contributed to the controlled, intelligent growth of our city. He was a, was a calm and steady influence during historic times in our history, including the first Rodney King trial, the Northridge earthquake, and the opening of the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library. Greg never stopped serving his community. We will be forever grateful for his service. He will be briefly missed, and I'd like to adjourn a memory of the folks listed here that I emailed to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Huber. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. Also, really want to give my condolences to Mr. Skinner's family. He really served his, the union so well and was a very, very kind man, too. So we will miss him. Also, we lost Roy Hoag in the Casacaneo area, longtime resident, and his wonderful wife Catherine, I know, will miss him dearly, as well as the community. And then I also just wanted to mention a couple of things. One, I was able to participate in the Caneo Valley Women's Suffrage Centennial Celebration. And it was wonderful to see so many elected officials on Zoom describing the importance of women through history and their empowerment, which is really important. And also, you know, the Zooming does allow us to participate in more meetings. I was able to testify at the California State Historical Resources Commission without having to go to Sacramento. And I, I hope I represented our board's position well there, although the commission did decide to designate the entire San Francisco field lab as a cultural resource. And then also want to remind people about your mail-in ballots, and there also will be plenty of places that you can drop off your ballot, too, if you don't want to put it in the mail. And that information will be coming out shortly from our elections division. And that you can also register or confirm your registration and check that your address is right. And you can do that online by going to voterstatus.sos.ca.gov. Really important to be able to make sure that you can have no problems on election day. And our county already has over 70% of people voting by mail, so we're pretty attuned to that. And with that, just two small comments also. Oak Park is just really such a wonderful community. And a young man, 11-year-old, came to our municipal advisory council saying we need more trash cans. He's been picking up trash along Canaan for the last three years with his mom. And because of that, the MAC is considering that, as well as instituting a volunteer program. So what a nice activity, you know, can't be in school, but to develop this way of participating in his community and getting some action, which I just love to see at his young age, too. And then also, David Goldstein wrote in our local star about Carolyn Cass Barton, also from Oak Park, who has led an effort to protect a very large heritage ash tree in the Rancho Simi Rec and Park District area. That was built, that was, a playground was built actually too close to that tree. And now, instead of cutting down the tree, which is what was the first choice, they're looking at other ways. Same thing in the city of Thousand Oaks. Love to see that in this community of Westlake Village, looking at chopping down an oak tree because its roots were knocking some cement. So the idea that we can actually move the cement around or plant, put some rubber paving down instead so that we can keep these major historic trees. So good, good, good news on that front, and thank you, and that concludes my comments. Also asking that you close in honor of the people on my list.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Parks. Congratulations to all of our students. Through COVID-19, we have started school. Many of us, anxiety of trying to figure out how to work and get our kids educated and all the above. So if you hear Zoom meetings where there's noises in the background, just give everyone patience and consideration as we're all working in our virtual distance world. So I wanted to say congratulations and thank you to the teachers, administrations, Stan Mantooth, our Ventura County Office of Education, for working with our Public Health Director as we're going through this new world of distance learning, or more robust. So thank you. I attended many of the California State Association meetings, along with our urban counties of California meetings as your advocate to the state level and federal level in regards to funding and policies and ordinances for, that really affect our community. Thank you to all of our state and federal officials really working hard for our county. It's been really impressive. And I just feel gratitude to have our CEO, Mike Powers, helping to assist with our staff as to getting data and information so that our legislation can make decisions based on facts and figures. And because it really hits us hard as a budget. So as you saw today's budget, we are in much better situation than we could be. And so just thank you to everyone for your efforts on that. I also, as the Chair of the Board, am on the Visioning Committee for our harbor and really making sure that we get the feedback from all of the players, just like we would do with our general plan on visioning. We are doing the same thing as the harbor with Mark Sandoval. And there is a website that is going to be up, talking about it, so we can get all the community's aspects and to make sure that all is heard as to how that harbor will be moving forward. And I think that's really important. We've been working with the Coastal Commission. We've heard them. We've been talking with the city of Oxnard. And the meetings that we have had have been very promising. And so I'm really looking forward to the working relationship with the HOAs and the businesses and so forth. My position is really just to stand back and make sure we're, we're listening to each other and collaborating. So it's, it's great, and the website is up, so I urge people to go to there.
By the way, Madam Chair, just for information with the visioning statement, you know, we started that several years ago, maybe 10, eight years ago. And, and we started with the pre-review process because of Fisherman's Wharf. And we have X3, and we have other plots that we need to work over at, at the, at the harbor. But the visioning statement, I, I think is a good, good process and, and come out with, with a pre-review process with projects where, that we're potentially looking at the harbor. So I think it's an important, important that we have a partnership with the city, Coastal Commission and the county.
Yes, it is truly a collaborative effort for it to be successful. We could build something there and it not be a success because we didn't get the collaboration to really make it work. So it's, it's, it's not the first time that this has happened. It's a continual upgrade, and so it's, it's very exciting to be doing.
And the unfortunate thing that we had, you know, we had, I call it the recession, well, the depression. We had the recession in 2008, '09, that there was a couple of projects that were approved and didn't happen because of the financial crisis that we had. But I think not with the visioning statement or process, excuse me, and the pre-review process, I think that's going to help us tremendously.
And we'll make sure that Mark Sandoval, our Harbor Department Head, comes and does a presentation, is what the committee is doing and so forth, because I think that's important, using their consultant that the Board of Supervisors approved to hire for this item. So.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Long, yeah, this is Supervisor Bennett. I, I, since we, since we decided to make all of our general comments, there is one really other important announcement I wanted to make. You could bear with me just for a minute. It's about the STEM Ambassadors Program. And that's, the STEM Ambassadors Program is a nonprofit founded in 2017 by eight middle and high school students and their teacher, Alex Wolf. He's at Data Middle School now. And these guys are incredible, what they did. In, in July of 2019, they started training teachers to have students start to do more hands-on things. So they created Spark Cartons for area schools. And they've trained 1,500 students, have been trained with CAD marker technologies. Well, then, as a result of COVID, then this spring, they started building face shields. And at first, you know, they were building 10 a day, and they turned those over to VCMC. But they, these were not just sort of, you know, I've worn some of those shields that my friends have made, and they're pretty uncomfortable. But these were so comfortable that VCMC asked for 400 more. And then these guys ended up doing, went from 10 a day to 100 a day. And then it was so positive that they ended up delivering 3,500 face shields to VCMC, CMH, St. John, Kaisers and more. And then they recently hooked up with the local businesses, Soc Industries, who helped with the PTG and then ECHA Medical for producing injection mold headbands and Associated Pacific Machine for cutting the shields. And now the STEM Ambassadors have produced 16,500, that's 16,500 more shields. And these shields have been donated to local businesses to help restart the economy. They've been shipped domestically and internationally to four continents that have limited PPE. And so we're going to be sending certificates out, but the certificates are going out to 18 people have been responsible for 20,000 face shields being distributed since COVID took place. So everybody in Ventura County ought to be really proud of them. And I hope to get their, their leader into the boardroom someday when we can have physical, physical presence in the boardroom. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much. Okay, along with the other items, we have a, I would like to urge people to go to my Supervisor Kelly Long Facebook page. I've posted items. We've got the Wildlife Assistance and Insurance Resource Town Hall. That will be September 4th at 1:00 p.m. with Insurance Commissioner Laura. We also have with Hope Latinos, the Latino Empowerment Day 2020, which is September 10th. And I'd like to congratulate Charmaine Bruner for being appointed on Saturday as a judge. That was an amazing, amazing, you haven't heard that yet? I, oh, sorry. Yeah, she's got to be on my Facebook page. Just really, KTLA, I think, covered the article, but I just wanted to say thank you. She's going to be amazing for us as our new judge. I look for county counsel because she worked with us for so long, and it's been a privilege to work with her, and I'm just really, really excited for her to be going into this new position.
She worked for a good team, for Leroy's team, huh?
Yes. She has represented us very well, and she will continue to represent us well. Along with that, we have the Senseless T-shirts that are being worn.
I got it on.
Just, I, I wanted to say thank you. We have Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Huber, I know, has it on because he's texted me a picture. We've got the T-shirts all up here. I would like to say thank you to all our volunteers and... Um we've got the t-shirts all up here. I would like to say thank you to all our volunteers and. Ventura County of Community Foundation for the caravans and wearing the twenty twenty glasses and just making the fun of it. Um it's extremely hard to get to our community that has not been registered for census. And um the trust associated right now with COVID nineteen. In getting people to be out and or to register online, getting an internet connection, it's been hard. So many different ways why um our community is not counted. So just thanks to the board and CEO's office and and all that are involved in this because it's such a key issue for our community. We're talking budget today. And this is a key thing for a budget that we can do, so everyone, if we could just remember the census.
Madam Chair, I.
Yes.
Just I want to thank the team, you know, the I I think you guys went out over the weekend from one end of the county to the other. But I also want to commend, you know, uh the Nylund Acres because Mike um Mike Powers. Barber.
Mike Barber.
Yeah, he's done a really, really good, a great job over in Nylund Acres. I think they're pretty, pretty darn close to seventy percent, you know, and but. That kind of effort, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood is really gonna help us tremendously. But I'd like to commend everybody that's been working on this uh on the census. What is it, about two thousand dollars per person? Is that what?
Yes, two thousand dollars per person and it provides so much services.
Tremendous amount of money that and it's important that we count everybody and no names, right? We just count.
Right.
Okay.
Um and then also I.
Go ahead. When you fill it out, when you fill it out, the census form, I mean, it's lickety-split. It just, I I don't think it took me five minutes. I can believe how quick it went. So it's really easy for people to do to fill out their census when they get it.
Right, I think I I didn't mind outside on my cell phone. So um I just, I urge everyone to make sure you get it done. Uh and then also in sadness to just adjourn in those memory on this list. Um and along with those was Tony Skinner, who has left a legacy with Ace High School in all that he's done for our labor. Um and education of our workforce. Um and then also Ed uh Bill Edmonds. Lena Edmonds is a city council member for Fillmore. She lost her husband and just really appreciate all. That their family has done for our community. So with that, thank you very much. And I will pass it on to CEO Mike Powers for his comments before our one o'clock.
And we can't forget our PIOs, you know, Ashley and Natalie Hernandez and they've done excellent work on that too, so I think it's important that we commend them too, you know. In the clerk's office.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. Chair Long, board members, just echo comments about Tony Skinner. I I got to know him in the VCMC hospital project and. Just such a great advocate for trades workers and construction workers and for local workers in that project in particular, so. Just a big-hearted, passionate guy. That's great news about Charmaine. Uh Leroy, you got quite a crew going over to the bench there, man. I'm telling you, too well. Don't get any ideas, guys.
We'll ask Ashley.
Great reflection.
We'll ask Ashley to do a press release.
Yeah. That's awesome. Uh just real quick, uh we had a uh community forum uh on the intersection of race and law enforcement on August fifth, five thirty to seven thirty. It was a Zoom meeting. Uh we had a great panel, Sheriff EU, District Attorney Totten, Claudia Bautista, Assistant Public Defender. Regina Hatcher Crawford from um the NAACP, Savette Johnson, Dr. Johnson, our behavioral health director. Marcus Mitchell, Director of our Child Support Services. As well as Rosalyn Wilford from Black Lawyers of Ventura County. And it was moderated by Monique Nolan, uh the chief deputy from AAA and she did her usual uh great job. Just appreciate everybody participating in that. Sean Otten and the HR team putting it together, county IT, CEO IT, putting it together. It was a complicated deal. Uh but uh we really appreciate that and it's an ongoing process of looking at these issues of diversity that we know are a priority for your board. Uh lastly, I would say also that we've got a state of the county.
You did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
It was really good. It was a great job. Really appreciate the participation, the sheriff and all. You all did so well.
No, thank you.
Really a good learning experience.
And I thought it was a very um just since we're making a comment, I thought it was a very empowering who we had speaking. The questions that were done and also the slides to present. Um where our uh funding is going and what our public safety is doing. I mean, we have to have those conversations. And so I really appreciate that.
And the panel was very diverse. I mean.
Absolutely.
You know, it was really, really great. You did a really good job.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you. We'll be holding our state of the county for the management council September sixteenth at four. And then in partnership uh with the chambers from East and West County and the taxpayers association. Thursday, September seventeenth at one, September seventeenth at one. And uh thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes.
I I just just gotta share this because I just saw it come in. I just want to commend Rosa Gonzalez too for the good work that he does. I didn't forget you, Rosa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we are done with our comments for our board and CEO. We are going to have to take a fifteen to twenty-minute recess in regards to our planning department setting up for our one o'clock time certain. Uh county councillors, is there anything on the closed session that we could do while we're waiting? If not, we'll do it afterwards, our closed session.
Probably do it afterwards.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I will um ask those that are on Zoom that will be creating uh doing public comment. I make sure your audio and your video are working if that's the way you want to be. We will call um ahead of time. Your names uh so that you'll be ready and on cue, okay? Thank you very much for your patience.
Back at two thirty, is that right?
It'll be, yes, that's a good one. At two thirty, we will be back for our one o'clock time certain. So thank you very much. If you hear any uh talking while we are at recess, we're testing mics. Thank you very much and we'll be back at two thirty.